I'd like to open the July, no, June 5th, 2020 or 2023 meeting. And Vice Chair Melissa Merrill has the invocation tonight.
If you'd like to join me, please bow your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in humble prayer for all of our citizens and the decisions we will work through and into the future. It is our prayer that you alone will provide peace and favor as we diligently work for the benefit of Union County. And we thank you, God, in advance for your many blessings. We seek your presence, wisdom, and direction over this board and our staff to rise according to your sovereign will, to uphold the principles taught in your word, and that each of us will be faithful to preserve what is good and true in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to invite Terry Connell Davis to come up. We have some special guests tonight. If, Terry, if you'll come up and make some introductions.
Ladies, if y'all come up with her, just come up with her.
This is Ms. Aiden Horn. She's Ms. Union County. And we've got Ms. Ava Joy Perez. She is Ms. Teen Union County. And then we have Riley Pope with us. She is Little Ms. Petite Union County. And then we have Baby Ms. Union County, Ms. Magnolia Balcom.
Okay. And so they are going to lead us in our pledge tonight. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we usually get a picture.
Okay.
We don't need a picture. If all the commissioners want, well, I tell you what, what if we all stand up here behind you guys and then y'all can stand up in front? I want that baby real bad. All of the commissioners stand up with us. And Ms. Horn, you look like you got rushing. You won the title, right? You're rushing. Any rushing in your background?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
Okay. All right. On the count of three, one, two, three. Want to get a couple? One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Congratulations. One other thing before we get going, we're glad to have Richard. Okay. Next, we have the public sign in, let's see, public speakers. We've got two signed up on the line. I think we have either one or two signed up on the sign in sheet. So first, we have Audrey Ansel. Audrey, did I say that right? Audrey, you here?
Hello. My name is Audrey Ansel. I live in Indian Trail, and I attended Porter Ridge High School as a graduate of the class of 2022. I've come to speak to you today in response to things that were said on March 20th, 2023. There were questions posed about books related to Pride Month and Pride Book displays in our local libraries. You expressed concern that these could attract, quote, "predators" to our libraries. I am here to tell you that by prohibiting or discouraging books that feature queer representation, you are making a huge mistake. In my first year living in Union County, I was ostracized and bullied by an adult woman, a parent, who found out I was gay. She outed me to my parents and to my friends' parents, who would not let me hang out with their children. I was 12 years old. When I was shamed for who I loved, it was in books that I could find relief from the harsh words of adults. In characters who loved like me, I learned how to love myself. Had I not been able to find those books in my local library, I would have only felt further isolated. I understand that parents deserve the right to make choices about the information their kids are exposed to, but my parents didn't get a choice. I didn't get to tell them that I was gay when I was ready, and my parents instead had to figure out how to comfort me when my foundation was shattered. I know better than anyone that this issue is not simple, and I know that you're trying to speak for your constituents, but I am one of those constituents. Understand that my story is not a unique one. The children of this county cannot fight for themselves when the adults in their lives fail to step up. I am asking you to step up. It is my current understanding that there are no longer Pride Book displays in the Union County libraries. To me, this act tells me that you would rather appease the few loud anti-LGBTQ voices in this county than uplift, defend, and celebrate the diverse population that resides here. You can take down the book displays, you can cancel programming, and you can tell employees to censor themselves, but there will always be queer people in this county. There are queer people in your local libraries, your schools, your churches, your neighborhoods, and there are queer people in this room. When a community makes great progress, there is always pushback, but you cannot stop the march of progress. So I am here to implore you to think of what side of history you prefer for your name to be on. Will you do the right thing and demand a safe, equitable future for Union County, or will you cower in the past? Until my rights are protected and insured in this county, I will continue to make my voice heard, and I and the other amazing LGBTQ members of this county will see you at the polls. In the words of openly gay politician and activist Harvey Milk, "Rights are only won by those who make their voices heard." Thank you.
Ms. Ansel, if you wouldn't mind a second. What you heard us talking about was displays that would bring things to a central location. It wasn't taking those books out of the library.
Correct.
It was to, it was in order to prevent the things like you exactly went through, people identifying kids gathered around a table of books like that, and kids gathered around in an area where something could be predicated upon. So it's not, definitely, we haven't taken those books out of the library.
No, I understand those books haven't been removed from the library, but I think removing those displays isn't going to prevent the harm.
It prevents the people gathered to one location.
I wasn't outed because I got a book about being gay from the library.
Yeah, what?
I was not outed to my parents because I went and picked a book off of a book display.
Yeah, you might not be, but others could be, and could be open to child predators. So that was the discussion that we had and what we did. We didn't take books out of the library.
I understand that. I'm here to talk about the book displays, so.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Chad Rory.
Chad Rory, own land on, at 6120 Medlin Road here in Monroe. This is a family farm. I was here two months ago talking to y'all about the water extensions. Just wanted to remind you, I think y'all should be voting on that soon, so just wanted to bring that back up to you. In November 2022, the Union County Board, y'all voted and approved a set of requirements. There's 14 people on Medlin Road that have met those requirements. Also, over 80% of them of those have arsenic in the water, which is one of those things that they were looking forward to extend the water lines to areas that were needing it and that had contaminated water. So just want to bring that back up to you, that we have not forgot, the people have not forgotten that this was voted on, and we're waiting for y'all to approve that. These were standards that y'all set and approved, and now we're just waiting on y'all to approve it, to get, to get water. That farm that I run for my dad, that has been in our family for five generations, and we're not going anywhere. Union County is where our heart is, and we're asking that the Board make that decision tonight and approve those people that have asked for those water line extensions. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And one thing I wanted to mention, I can't remember, did you bring an application? We'll get you, we've got an application. We have a committee designed to get, come up with ideas and ways of funding and about getting water to the areas of the county like yours. So if you were to be interested, or somebody in your group would be interested in serving on that board, we would love to have you, so for people like you that going through the things that you're going through.
Appreciate it. Be glad to. Thank you.
Lynn West can get, if you'll contact her tomorrow.
All right.
She can get you a link to the application.
Thank you.
Thank you. This looks like Todd Barber. Is Todd here tonight? Todd, you?
Sorry about that. I don't hear well. My name's Todd Barber, 2007, Astoria Drive in Road, North Carolina, and just happened also to be on the Indian Trail Town Council. Last year, we had a group come in from Emerald Woods about some bad well water, and we entered into a water line agreement with the county, and I believe that's a bona fide agreement, correct? All right, we got okay. And I understand that from our staff maybe that there might be a little hiccup in the funding, so I want to thank you for doing the line. I just kind of want to draw attention to that because it might be one little blip in the budget, but you may have already funded it, you may be working on it, but I just want to draw attention to it, and whatever you can do, we appreciate it because we got some people on some bad well water, and I think we're moving on schedule, if I understand. So I just want to draw attention to that, and thank you for whatever you do, because I know I want to go to tell these residents in Emerald Wood that our commissioners care, right? Yeah, okay. The, but I just want to, some of you and you might not aware of this agreement, so I wanted to make sure you're aware of it, and this is a great thing that y'all did and partnered with us, and I appreciate it, and I just want to say thank you. The other thing is also is I went to a meet and greet for something called the Union County Vipers. It's a football team. They play at Monroe High School. They're kind of, they got some NFL players, and NFL player is actually their coach. They play basketball at the Baptist Church. They play at Monroe High School. It's a after-high school program where they can get college online, do all that. They're just wanting to get the message out. They had a church bottom of us. I know Brandon Reeves is one of their donators, and they got mentorship through a person with community action. So they doing some good things, and I thought y'all liked to be aware of it, so if you don't mind, I'm going to drop, leave some information on it. The office is actually here in Monroe on West Sunset. It's where their offices are. They're doing good things for young men, and I thought that they've been wanting to get the message out, and I told them I would, if y'all don't mind. I'll leave some information. And I'm sure Donald Kincaid is the president of the group, and he might help out.
Thank you.
That's all I got, and I appreciate what y'all do, and everybody here that works, and the sheriff, and the fire, and every mess, police, everybody. Thank you. We got a great, appreciate y'all making Union County a great place to live.
I'd encourage you to stick around if you can, because we are going to be talking about some of that budget stuff, about water and sewers, things like that. So if you can, stick around. Love to have you.
You know, far as water and sewer.
Stick around.
I got one comment on that. At my house, we have no problem getting water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I think the young lady that just left is on the other one on here, is that right? Yeah. So that'll conclude the.
I'm sorry. Okay. All right.
That'll conclude the public comments. Next, we'll go to the public hearing, informal comments. Next, we'll go to public hearing. Recognize Brian Matthews.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tonight is your public hearing on the manager's recommended budget for 2024. You'll be holding a public hearing tonight and receiving comment. You will not be able to vote on the budget until June 19th because of the way the notice went out and how that went. So the items in here are really for your information and for discussion, but a vote to occur hopefully at your June 19th meeting, otherwise we may have some special things we have to do if you decide not to vote on the 19th. But I want to get into it, and I'm really going to hit the highlights. There's a lot of information in this budget. It's almost a $445 million budget. I don't want to spend all night talking to you about the budget. It is available. Anyone can see it. We'll sit down and discuss it with them, happy to go through the pieces and parts of it, but I'm going to hit the highlights. So just to talk about one thing, the Board's direction was you wanted to see a flat tax rate. You wanted to see that tax rate remain as it was previously. You also gave us the direction that you wanted a bifurcated tax rate. And when I say bifurcated, I mean split by education and then by general government, and that's how it's shown here. So the tax rate is shown as 58.8 cents, bifurcated into, you've got the Union County General Fund, the Union County Debt Fund, and then you have your education component of that, and that all adds up to you 58.8 million, just some pieces of that. We believe that we're going to have about a 4.5% increase in values this year over our previous year, and that's good. In past years, we've been more on the 3.5, 3.75 range. We think we've had good growth this year, and we can recognize that. The value of penny has increased to 3.9 million. I believe it was around 3.7 or just a little bit over previously. And as I said, the tax rate is remaining unchanged unless, of course, the Board makes other decisions. Just to give you a breakdown of that, I said previously it's almost about a $445 million budget. It's $444,997, $997,784, that's a lot to say. And these are the buckets that that's broken down into. You see the education component, and that's all education. When I say that, that means that's Union County Public Schools, that's the debt for Union County Public Schools, that's South Piedmont Community College, the debt for South Piedmont Community College. And what's not often shown is the amount of money that has to be paid to the charter schools, which is inside of the budget for Union County Public Schools. And I'll have a slide about that a little bit later I want to talk about, but just wanted to point that out, that's what makes up education. It's not just one organization. It's education as a whole. Public safety, again, not just law enforcement. There's a lot that goes into public safety. So you have EMS and some of the other categories. General government, then, of course, is what we have here, then human services, cultural, recreational, and then your other items, economic, physical development, and budgetary. That adds up to your total of almost $445 million. And please stop me at any point you might have questions. Just to give some highlights on what is part of this budget, we are for public health and safety. We are recommending some additions to our law enforcement department. We are recommending we add some school resource officers and also some supervisors for that. We understand that safety is paramount and extremely important when it comes to our schools, and we've been working with our Sheriff's Department and our schools to provide school resource officers in all of our schools. We're not quite there. This will be, I think we have one more year to go, and then we will then have a one resource officer in every school. So if you do approve this addition, which is four resource officers, and then a sergeant and a captain for command staff, if you approve that, then we will be, I believe, about five short from being able to have one in every single school, and that would be in next year's budget that we bring back to you. And that's about a $1.2 million cost. That's not just salaries. That's benefits, that's equipment, that's everything that goes into a staff member. So I don't want anyone to think that that's just salaries. There's a lot that's baked into that number. We're also requesting some changes for how we do EMS in the county. We're recommending $1.2 million for operations. We're going to go to more of a hybrid deployment model, and then we're also investing in capital for our EMS. We know that they need ambulances, they need that capital to make sure that they are getting to our citizens and getting them where they need to be, getting them healthcare in order to get to the hospital and be treated. So we recognize that the current model has some constraints, and we're hopeful that this hybrid deployment model will certainly give us some better benefits as far as staffing goes. We've had some challenges with staffing in EMS, so that's one of the recommendations that we're making for public health and safety. Medicaid expansion. This is important because it has a big impact on counties all around the state, but here in Union County, we anticipate that we're going to have around 10,000 extra individuals who will qualify for Medicaid, and that's about a 20% increase over what we have right now. The good news is, is that the positions that it will take to help facilitate that, we will be able to fund that through the reimbursements that we will get from the state and the federal government. So while we anticipate we'll need 12 additional staff members in order to handle this eligibility requirement for the Medicaid expansion, we do also anticipate revenue that will come from the state and the federal government to be able to offset those costs. So that is, that is a plus there. However, that is not going to make the work easy. We're adding a significant number of individuals that will have to go through that eligibility process. That does take effect in October of 2023. One of the other things that we're doing in the county is we are building a new library and anticipate that library will be operational here in this fiscal year, and in order to run a library, you need employees, you need books, you need all the resources to go in there. So there is a cost that we're going to have to incur in order to be able to run the library. We anticipate we'll need 18 new staff members, and that's a, that's part-time and full-time. We'll also need our supplies, materials, and books, and that's around a $1 million increase to this budget in order to fund the library cost needs. So that is an addition to the current budget. Solid waste. Solid waste is actually an enterprise. What I mean by enterprise is that it's a business function. It's intended to operate without general fund dollars, intended to operate without general fund dollars. You can put general fund dollars into it, but typically a business is supposed to operate without general fund dollars. That caveat, we are actually recommending in this particular budget that we do inject some general fund dollars, $550,000, in order to offer to our more rural residents, actually to all residents, but certainly our rural residents, the ability to come and dispose of garbage at our convenience sites with a bag limit for free. So essentially, they can come to our convenience sites, as long as they don't exceed the bag limit, they can dispose of that garbage that day, and there's no cost. Now, if they bring more, there is a cost, because we do have to set a bag limit. There is a limit to how we do that. But the good news is, is that we operate those convenience sites three days a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. So it doesn't stop you from coming another day if you wish to and you need to. We think that's a benefit. This is really more of a trial program. We'd like to see how this operates this year, see what it yields as far as the amount of tonnage that we receive in garbage for our convenience sites, how well it's received from our residents, and then look to the Board to see if that's a solution that we continue, but this is something we're recommending in this year's budget. We're also recommending some changes to our current fee structure when it comes to our municipal solid waste tonnage fees and our construction and demolition tonnage fees. So you'll see here what the current fees are for MSW, what we're recommending those fees to go to, as well as for construction and debris. We believe that the market is to the point where we can provide these increases and still not impact the tonnage that we receive. We think we'll actually gain additional revenue, and it'll help us with our bottom line. The goal here really, honestly, is to build up enough of a fund balance in solid waste so that we continue to, number one, cover the fact that we have an unlined landfill, and we have to have the dollars set aside for whenever we close that landfill at some point in time. And we also need dollars for when we need more capital, when it comes to equipment, comes to expanding the landfill, any of those things that we need to do. So we want to build up a sufficient fund balance in that to be able to accommodate that over time, and we believe that this is a fair and reasonable increase to those fees. And those do not, those are not paid individually by a resident. They're paid by the clients that come and dispose of the waste. Now, doesn't mean that that's not charged back to that particular individual, so when I say $44 a ton or $47 a ton, that's a business that's bringing that tonnage to us. They pay that. And then if the municipality charges that, they charge it however they charge it, whether through taxes, through a solid waste fee, or however that's accommodated. So it's really mostly businesses that pay that. Yes, sir?
Brian, if I could ask a question, and Patrick, you may have to answer this. So one of the things we have, like our parks, like Kane Creek or any of Jesse Helms Park or any of our parks, how do we handle waste there? Do we have a dumpster there for campsites or for, do the people have to take their white waste away from there? How does that work, the parks?
No. We provide receptacles at those facilities, and then we contract with a hauler to take those off-site.
Okay. The, one example that I've heard is the Jesse Helms Park where the soccer fields, the ball fields are, that sometimes on a weekend, a lot of trash gets dumped on that road. Is there any way of providing a dumpster, like a small dumpster, not a big, not one of the ones we use at landfills or the convenience sites, but a smaller dumpster? Is there a way that we have of collecting that, or could we put those out there on the weekends?
We can certainly check into it. That is a fairly remote location, so I know there's some concern about providing a receptacle that we're not able to monitor, but we can certainly look into it.
Yeah, the concern we would have, not saying we can't do it, is that it becomes basically a free dumping site. Again, there's always a way for us to look at things.
I agree with that, but if we're going to allow dumping without having a cost, we don't want to man this. Something I'm thinking about, maybe just a weekend-type situation where, you know, and maybe even one at Kane Creek where we have a dumpster to be picked up, might even be easier. But the, a lot of trash on that road, so a lot of people leave with their picnic baskets and, you know, we don't, what we need to do is everything we can to keep Union County clean, because that's been, that's been a concern of a lot of people, that the roads get littered, and that's one place, I think, that we have some responsibility in it with our ball fields on the, whether it's trash cans or a dumpster.
Sorry. We will, we will come back with a strategy for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So water and sewer. Water and sewer is another enterprise fund. Again, it's a business function. There's some of the things that we're proposing for the Board to consider in this budget cycle. Number one, transferring money from our fund balance. We would transfer money from our reserves, so we have a 365-day reserve policy, and part of what makes up that policy is depreciation. What we're recommending in this particular budget is we use $19 million of our depreciation reserve in order to help fund our capital programs, which is R and R. It's all of the capital needs that we're able to support, and we're recommending that we do that. There is later in the agenda an item where the Board would have to consider an adoption of a policy change that would be, that is tied to this particular item right here. Other item that we're recommending that the Board consider is a 1.75% rate increase for water and sewer. That is across all customers, and that is for multiple items. That is for the short-line water extension program for '22 and '23. Now, that doesn't go beyond that. This is only for the applications we accepted in FY '22, and then the applications that recently have been submitted for FY '23. You'd have to decide what you'd want to do for the future, but this would accommodate at least FY '22 and FY '23, as the gentleman brought that question up earlier. It's also for an expansion of capacity for the 12-Mount Creek Plant from 7.5 million gallons to 9 million gallons, and then also would help with our R and R renewal and replacement projects. So we're recommending that at this time. I do want to tell the Board that this is not the last decision that we're going to need to discuss and for you to make on water and sewer. You've got a lot of information from our consultant, recently Brown and Caldwell, and we'll need to revisit that, and I'm thinking July, August timeframe, have a workshop, discuss some of those items that are there as far as system, system issues, so we have some system decisions to make, but I do want you to be aware, this was not the final decision that you'll be faced with.
Right. Have we made all the decisions on increasing the system development fee paid by the builder for sewer?
So that would actually come on your June 19th meeting as well. That's actually the next bullet point, actually, increase system development fee for projects for sewer, and understand the system development fee for water is actually decreasing because of the way that study and the methodology works, but for sewer, however, that would increase significantly. It's about a 53% increase. On that, that decision is not for tonight. That's not until June 19th, because the way the requirement is under the statutes, the decision for the actual system development fee comes on June 19th, just like your decision will be for the budget, but that is a recommendation that we're making, that you set that system development fee. Yes, sir?
And Brian, just for clarification for the audience here, that system development fee for water reduced due to depreciation on certain water projects, correct? fee for water reduced due to depreciation on certain water projects, correct?
There's a, yes, a number of items, but essentially, we're, we're not, we're no longer growing so much that system. We've already put the growth in place for that, and so because of that, you're able to actually reduce that system development fee. Now, in the future, if you decide on additional water capital projects, that could change that particular item. And that's one of discussions that we would have at the July slash August workshop. But yes, sir, you're absolutely right.
Brian, if we could just stay on this a bit longer, you had said that the transferring of funds, ARPA funds essentially, as well as the 1.75% rate increase that you're proposing, that that will help with these capital projects. But it's not going to fully fund them, is it?
No, sir. It does not, and that's one of the reasons why we have to have the discussion in July slash August over the system decisions, because there are projects that this cannot fund.
Yeah. Matter of fact, I think one could even go further and say that neither the current rate structure nor the 1.75% that's proposed, they don't even come close to addressing the halted capital projects for repair and replacement for water and sewer that are on our halted list presently.
If you, yes, sir, all the halted projects you cannot fund with a 1.75% increase. That is correct.
And the Brown and Caldwell presentation you referred to from last month, was it their opinion that $652 million in capital projects was required to address problems that are manifest either right now or will be manifest in three years?
Yes, sir. Their recommendation is the board needed to consider some capital projects. It was to the tune of $652 million in today's dollars. That did not, that was not escalated for future dollars. That was today's dollars. Obviously, the board will have to decide if those capital projects are something you want to do, but there are system issues that you will need to address that some of those capital projects do have impacts on.
Okay. And lastly, you know, you mentioned here the $19 million that have, where the plan is basically to take that from fund balance, from public works, from enterprise fund, fund balance. That is a one-time use of funds, right? It's not something that we can expect to go back to the well to again and again fiscal year after fiscal year. This is a one-shot deal.
Yes, sir. It is a use of one-time dollars. That's correct.
Okay. So what we're trying to do here in the, as we look towards the new fiscal year with the Crooked Creek Interceptor project, the expansion of 12 Mile by 1.5 million gallons, the transfer of ARPA funds, the $19 million, the 1.75%, these are all kind of short-term fixes to trying to partially fund the interceptor and the expansion at 12 Mile, right? Not fully fund, but fund in part.
So that, I will say that, no, we can fully fund the Crooked Creek Interceptor.
Well, I mean, but at 12 Mile, you're going to, you're going to need some bond issuance.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, we will, we will need to issue a bond in order to fund that actual project. Yes, sir. It's not by cash.
Right.
No, sir. I didn't understand what you were asking.
Right. I just, I just wanted to make it, make sure it's clear to everybody that this 1.75%, the moving around of ARPA funds to nine projects that we had previously approved, like the $10 million for the Winkett Water Distribution Line, you know, all of these fund sources are still inadequate for us to complete the expansion of 1.5 million gallons at 12 Mile.
You will have to use some revenue bonds in order to accommodate that. These are ways to actually pay for those debt services over time, but you, we, there will not be cash available to fund those upfront. You will have to have some revenue bonds.
And just kind of as a seg from Commissioner Brian Helms here, on the, on the SDF fees that we're looking at in the future, we are expecting wastewater SDF fees to go up.
Yes, sir.
But we are also expecting water SDF fees to go down.
Yes, sir.
Approximately 50% for each.
It's roughly equivalent.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Brian, let me say this. Commissioner Williams has heard us say it a few times, but I'll continue on with it for the benefit of the audience. We talked about a general obligation bond voted on by the voters of Union County so that everybody in the room who's a Union County voting resident can vote on those $600 million worth of bonds.
Yes, sir.
We can vote on the approximately $300 million cost of a site B plant. We can vote on other expansion projects. We can vote on a water, which we've talked about, maybe even doing that next year. Mr. Roy, who was here earlier, would be interested in that conversation of doing a bond for water. We do them for schools, we do them for other things. So we did them for the Sheriff's Department, we did them for 911 Communications, and so that we can use those geo-bonds voted on by the people to see if they think we're ready enough to grow with a $300 million sort of plant.
Chairman Rushing, when that item comes up later in the meeting, I'll be ready to discuss that and some of the grave problems and concerns there are with a geo-issuance route for these kind of enterprise projects.
And I'm sure the people of Union County are wise enough to make this a good decision on that, just as they do school bonds. Also, that we're looking at a $20 million maybe, or more or less, from the state again next year, that they've talked about trying to provide more funding for water and sewer projects inside Union County.
We've made some requests, yes, sir, to the General Assembly in their current budget cycle.
And they've been received well by the state.
To my understanding is, it has not been removed from the budget, so that's a good thing. It's not necessarily been identified specifically that they will fund that. What we are hearing is that the adoption of the budget is likely to be in the next 45, 60 days or so, maybe, hopefully. So we're hopeful that those funds will stay in, and we'll see some, some additional dollars that will come to the county from that. We did make a request for up to $20 million for those additional dollars.
Thank you. So if we err on side, the rate payers will be okay if we, if we just make good decisions as they come up, rather than making a bad decision this year, right?
Well, I think, you know, always erring on the side of caution is not a bad thing.
Thank you.
And one of the reasons why we're, we think it's a good idea to revisit those capital discussions in August likely, is because we'll have some of those decisions at that point. We'll know some additional information, and then you can make some decisions about how you fund those things. Commissioner Williams is right. I mean, there's all kinds of ways to look at this, whether it's with a geo-bond, whether it's a revenue bond, whether it's cash-funded, and we need to know those things and build it into your structure for how you pay for that. There's very few organizations that can, in fact, cash-fund everything, which is very, very difficult. So those are strategies we're going to have to discuss and decide what you want to do, which, that's why it's a workshop. You're going to roll your sleeves up, we're going to dig into it and get some decisions from there. What's on, what's not on here, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Chairman, is the Crooked Creek Interceptor. That is also a project that is being funded as part of our current budget, I mean, our future budget. That is not actually part of the 1.75% increase because we're using ARPA dollars. If the board approves a later agenda item, we will be using ARPA dollars to fund that Crooked Creek Interceptor, but that's not shown on here, and I did want to point that out.
And, and just the interceptors, the upsizing of lines that are already in the ground.
That's correct.
So we have lines in the ground.
It doesn't provide expansion. All it does is provide access to sewer capacity in the sewer service district, so...
And that's what we're waiting on in order to do Indian Trail and Stallings projects for commercial.
There are some projects that are, that are limited by that interceptor. Yes, sir.
Yes, and it's, it's fully funded with the ARPA dollars in your budget.
Well, we hope it is. That's, until we go out to bid for it, we hope that that's enough funding. We'll find out once we go out to bid. The board has authorized us to go through condemnation for the remaining properties. We're currently doing that. Design, I believe, is almost complete, so we're hopeful we'll be able to have a bid for that in the, in the summer, if possible. That's our goal. So, all right, capital investments. These are capital investments that are outside of the enterprises, so outside of solid waste, outside of Union County Water, the utility. So we are recommending that these, these are a number of the items that we'll be funding for capital. Obviously, UCS, Union County Public Schools has capital needs. We're requesting some of the dollars out of our side to help assist them with that. Design for the jail expansion, you had a presentation by the sheriff's office about the need for a jail expansion, and what we're requesting is some dollars in there to front the scoping and engineering work ahead of time, while then we decide how we move forward with funding that project. EMS, fire, and capital needs. I talked about that earlier, about how we're going to put some capital, hopefully, into our EMS, as well as the fire departments. IT enhancements. Understand that technology is changing rapidly. We need to keep up with that and make sure that we're being as efficient and effective as possible. And then finally, the judicial center funding. We know that our judicial partners need space, they need courtroom space. We've got to figure out how to accommodate that, and so we've recommended some dollars to help with that as well. And that makes up that $20 million of unassigned fund balance in order to go towards those capital projects. I do want to say, guys, that a, long-term, and this is my goal and our staff's goal, is to develop a very robust capital program, much like we've done with our Union County Water Utility. You've got a very structured capital program, you decide what projects you're going to do, and then we figure out how we're going to fund them over time. And I'm not going to say that we, we haven't done that. I'm going to say that I think we need to do a longer look at how we do that. These projects cost so much money, you really can't fund them with cash in one year. You've got to build your ability to pay for this over time, and we really need to dig in and do that. And so my goal is to work with the board to come up with, you know, a very clear capital plan for how we do that in the future. Not taking anything away from the efforts that our staff's been doing before, this is just about making sure that the board is, that you buy into and you own the decisions of what capital we need to do in the future.
Brian, real quick, the design of the jail, jail expansion.
Yeah.
We looked at maybe doing a bond because the estimated cost is around $130 million.
Yeah, our estimated cost is roughly $130 million. It could be less.
Well, the sheriff, the sheriff and I had a conversation, and I made the staff aware of, about, he possibly has found another solution for less than $50 million.
Sure.
So, so let's don't go out and spend that money until, till we have a conversation with his staff.
We absolutely don't intend on doing that, but this is setting aside some dollars for engineering and design, and we would absolutely want to make sure we include the sheriff's office on that. That would be a mistake on my part if we didn't have a sheriff.
And Sheriff, thank you for looking for alternatives and looking at a substantial reduction in cost for the new jail.
All right. Very good.
Hopefully, you won't need a room in there. We outlawed crime in the last meeting.
All right. So next item, employees. So I'll say this, and I'll say it often, employees are your greatest asset, but if you don't invest in your employees, they can become one of your greatest liabilities. And so we're recommending we continue investing in our employees, continuing with our post-employment benefits and being able to have that, that liability covered, funding our classification and compensation study at $2 million. That's, that is a half of a year. We won't have those results back until much later in this year, and that may or may not be enough. We're not going to know, honestly, till we get into the details of it. We do know that, especially in the Sheriff's Department, there are some salary discrepancies that we're aware of, and we're going to have to try and address that so that we can attract and retain good, qualified staff members here. And so we hope to have that for you later in the year, and we want to fund that. The realignment of having a county security and risk management functions. Honestly, it's been a long time coming. We really need to have that and be focused on safety and security for government center and all of our buildings, and so that is something that, that we think is very important for, under our employees. So Union County Public Schools, let's, let's talk a little bit about that. In this particular budget, we are recommending some additional operating funding of $6.2 million. It does not accommodate the entire request for the schools. Unfortunately, we just were not able to find the funding to be able to accommodate their entire operational request. That's not to say that they don't need it, it's just obviously the pie is only so big, and you have to do with what you have. We are reallocating out of the county's budget side, .26 cents out of our tax rate in order to accommodate the Union County Sheriff's Office resource positions that were previously funded, sort of, they were funded out of dollars that were removed from UCS's budget. So we're putting that, those dollars back into UCS's budget. We're taking it now out of our budget. So to reflect that, we've made a tax rate change to make that whole, so that's, that's why you see that reduction on our tax rate, putting that on the bifurcated school tax rate side of it. Also, I want to, again, highlight this, I said it earlier, the school has absolutely no control over the dollars that they have to spend or pay for charter schools. Right now, it's estimated $11.5 million. That number goes up every year based on the amount of budget that Union County Public Schools get, and it's just a number that they have to plug in, and they have to pay it, whether they like it or not, until we get the General Assembly to see and give us the ability to ask for more information and get more transparency and more detail. It's just a number that has to be paid, but I want to make sure that the public understands that that money comes straight out of Union County Public Schools' budget.
Brian, how much, how much were you unable to fund of operations?
A little over $8 million. So I think their request was about 14-plus million dollars more than what their previous year's budget was. We were able to fund $6.2 additional million, but not the other eight point, I wanted to say it was like 8.2, 8.3.
With 11.5 million going to charter schools.
I'm sorry?
With 11.5 million going to charter schools.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Do we, and Melissa may know this better than anybody, those dollars, do they stay in Union County, or do they go into other counties?
The local...
I'm glad you answered.
The local dollars for charter schools, state funding goes straight to the charter school, local dollars do not. It's funneled through Union County Public Schools' annual budget, and I believe it's plus or minus 30 different charter schools that they are responsible for sending the money with a student, and then the Union County Public Schools staff has to vet those, those student records to verify that they are indeed enrolled at those schools. Unfortunately, sometimes after the 30th or 40th day, and the money has already been spent, those charter schools are not required to return that money if, even if the student re-enrolls in Union County Public Schools. So finally, we only have a handful of charter schools in Union County, so with 30-plus charter schools, a lot of those could be in Mecklenburg County, Antson, Stanley, they could, you know, follow them across the state line. The money has to follow the student.
Is that just the state money, or the state and local money?
That's local money.
Local money. The state, like I said earlier, the state sends their portion directly to the charter schools. The Union County portion is with, is right off the top of whatever Union County Public Schools receives.
So that full 11.5 million comes from local tax dollars to the charter schools.
That is correct. And as your point was, that some of that money could be going outside the county.
Mm-hmm.
Brian, how do we expect this to change, given the recent events there in Raleigh with the difference in funding models? Do we, do we know, do we have a handle just yet about how that may change next year?
I don't, honestly. We're really just not quite sure how that's going to play out. So obviously, continuing on, one of the things that we, we were able to accommodate this year is the fully funding, the operational request for Union County Public Schools at $23.7 million. I do want to point out, we used one-time dollars out of our fund balance in order to make up that amount. So again, that is not an amount moving forward that we would be able to accommodate. We have to look at that individually every budget year, but we were able to take some of our fund balance this year, fund, fully fund their request for capital. I think that's best of benefit. And also, we were able to bring forward some dollars to help with the design for East Union Middle School, which is anticipated that that will be one of the bond referendum projects in 2024. It's my understanding the schools will be asking for that as part of their bond package, and in order to kind of sort of help them with that, we're recommending fronting some of those dollars for design, much like we did with Forest Hills High School. We did the same thing there, and, and we think this is a benefit. So again, we're recommending that $2.7 million for funding for design.
So that represents an excess of their, of the school's operating capital request?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Just so we're clear.
It actually is over what they requested. That's correct.
Yep.
South Piedmont Community College, another educational partner that we have, so again, additional operating dollars, they have a rate of .97 cents. We're... We're saying that we'll fund 125,000 dollars to help maintain that rate. Also, some additional operating capital, 375,000 dollars for South Piedmont Community College. I know they may have some additional requests, and we can discuss that at a later time. It's a relatively small number that they're asking for, but right now, this is the budget that was proposed for them at this point in time. So just want to talk a little bit about debt as well, just so you're aware. We do have debt that we have to pay, and it's made up of different components. Education has a component, and that's South Piedmont and Union County Public Schools. Public safety debt that we have to pay, and then, again, that has to do with our EMS, new emergency services building is where it's the sheriff's office. We have general government debt that we pay, and then the other items. So this is our annual debt service, it's almost 50 million dollars that we have to pay for that. That does change over time, based on whether we issue additional debt or debt falls off. But that does, that number does change over time. I'm not going to go through all of these slides, honestly. This is really more for information for the public. I'll post this whole thing, but I've hit most of the highlights. Some of the other things I do want to point out to you here, let me find the item that I want to talk about. Let's see. So fire departments, I do want to talk a little bit about the fire departments. I do know that when the board made a request that we keep the rates flat, they meant all rates. They meant the rates for general government as well as the rates for the fire departments. We've done our best to keep those rates flat. There is one change to that. Baker's Volunteer Fire Department was previously in error classified the wrong way. We have a current model, which is an 80/20 model for urbanized fire departments, and that means they have at least $1 billion in value in their property values. Is that correct, Patrick? And then we have a 60/40 split when you're considered more of a rural fire department. Baker's was classified in the rural fire department category. They should not have been. They should have been classified in the urban category. So that 40% is part of a subsidy that the county actually funds, and the 20% is a subsidy the county funds. They should actually have been receiving more of a 20% county subsidy and not a 40%. So we're recommending that there be a rate change for Baker's because of that. It does increase their rate. It goes from 3.43 cents to 5.22 cents. But it also does affect the county side of it because we're not going to be funding as much of their side that we were previously. So that is a change that we are recommending where you don't stay flat because of that particular circumstance. I am aware that, I believe that the Waxaw Fire Chief may be here to speak on this matter. They have some concerns. Obviously, we want to try and address all fire departments' needs as much as possible. Certainly welcome their input on this, but currently, that's what's being proposed for fire departments at this point in time. I already ran over the education funding here. Those are just highlights for the item there. Let's see here, let me talk about evaluation. Next steps. So next steps are budget hearing today, take some public comments, June 19th. Hopefully, the board is, has enough information that you're ready to make a decision. And at that point in time, if the budget is adopted, then we'll move forward with putting that together and getting things ready to start the fiscal year off on July 1. I want to take time to thank all the folks that were really possible for doing this. It says the manager's recommended budget. I can't do this work by myself. I mean, this is work that is done by all of these folks here, our budget team, Blake Hart, his staff, Mary, Greg, Adrian, tax administrators' office, our finance department. Everyone has had an involvement in putting this budget together, and they work very hard. And I want to give them the kudos for doing all the hard work and making it look easy for me, because I'm the one that has to stand up here and tell it to you and be the mouthpiece. But they did all the hard work on this, and so need to be able to say thank you for all our staff. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Those are highlights of the item. Obviously, there's a whole lot of detail in there. If you find items that you want more information about, or if the public has items they want more information about, please reach out to us. We're happy to go through it in more and greater detail. As transparent as they come, I believe in making sure everyone has what they need to make an informed decision.
Brian, real quickly, we glossed over some of the things that, how much that we budgeted to spend last year and how much we actually spent, how much we budgeted to receive last year and how much we actually received.
Okay. We can go back to that.
Those numbers are really great bottom-line numbers for people to get a hold on the management of their county resources.
Yeah, so general fund revenues, and again, this was, this shows you what was, from 2021, adopted all the way through what's proposed in the budget. Obviously, there are changes every year, and we usually try to go with, what is the change from '23 to '24? With revenue, the projected revenue for the end of fiscal year 2023, that's this year, we're projecting will be at almost 400 million, 395 million dollars and some change for revenues. We are proposing that those revenues are obviously almost 445 million for our 2023 budget. And a lot of that has to do in growth in sales tax and also growth in our values in our property. So that's one of the reasons why we're seeing that increase in our values and our revenue for upcoming year.
One of the things, if you're going back, that growth in sales tax revenue.
Yes, sir.
In 2020 and 2021, our sales tax revenue was 46,556,839.
That was, so in 2021, 2020, 2021, we adopted it at 46 million. The actual came in at a little over 56 million. And then in 2022.
Approximately 10 million dollars more.
Almost a 10 million dollar increase.
Now just going to the end, because this is the good news.
Oh, yes, sir. Then 2022, we budgeted 53 million, came in at 66 million. So that's almost 13 million dollars and more than we budgeted, obviously. 2023, we budgeted 67 million. We estimate we're going to close the year at almost 75 million dollars. So again, that's about an 8 million dollar increase. So what you're seeing is a trend in where sales tax revenue has been a lot higher than what we anticipated. Now, we're conservative by nature. That is a very volatile revenue source. What we don't like to do is count so highly on it that if it does go less than what we anticipate, then you're in trouble with your budget. But we also recognize that if we severely underestimate it, then we're just building tax, we're building revenue that you have to have a plan for. So this year, we've been more aggressive for how we anticipate our sales tax revenue. We certainly are still conservative, but we've been more aggressive on what we look at. We're going to estimate that we're going to collect about 81 million dollars in sales tax revenue for 2024.
So in just a few short years, we've seen, even with an economy going down.
Almost a 100% increase.
We've seen a huge increase.
Yes, sir.
And that's because a lot of you that are listening at home are shopping online. And when you buy online, you get credited at your zip code, not the zip code that it comes from. So keep ordering online and keep us up, because, you know, that's one thing, that's really probably one of the things helping us in an economy where we have about a 90% tax base that's residential.
Well, there was a time where, when I was a town manager, that one of my biggest complaints is a lot of individuals went outside of Union County, and they shopped outside of Union County, and we suffered for that. My own residents left, and they went somewhere else to shop, and we didn't get those revenue dollars. And that still happens. I don't want anyone to think that doesn't happen. But because of COVID, because of people shopping more online, we are benefiting from that. And I think that trend will continue. So hopefully, that will be a good news for us. We'll continue down that road.
Shop local if you can't shop online.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Expenses, you brought that up. Again, as you can see, expenses are certainly going up, and, you know, part of that is, you know, our services cost more. It just costs more to do business, and then our population base is growing. From '23 to '24, we anticipate that our expenses at the end of the year will be about 390 million dollars at the end of the year. We're going to have, you know, next year, almost 445 million dollars. So, you know, a lot of that, though, has to do, and I don't want you to misunderstand that, we are recognizing some additional dollars from other agencies. And so that's part of the benefit, too. We may have expenses, but the expenses are covered by the fact that we're getting revenue sources from other sources, state and federal funding. So again, we are seeing increases. We are using our fund balance, and that has been the board's policy. You don't like to just sit on dollars, and I get that. But at some point in time, we do have to have a plan for how we generate surplus dollars and how we fund our future needs with surplus dollars. So that's why, I mean, I want to talk about those capital plans and what we do for long-term strategy for capital. But we are doing, the board's policy is, if you have unassigned fund balance, then we work towards finding capital projects to fund with that, because that's the goal, to fund our capital projects with unassigned fund balance. We are adding some FTEs, and I talked about, that's full-time equivalent employees. So we are adding those, libraries, sheriff's office. We're going to add employees to DSS because of the Medicaid expansion. So those are the reasons why we're adding additional staff when it comes to our new expenses that we're going to incur.
And here's another thing to point out. We had 73 million, 73 and a half million budgeted for the adopted budget, and we've only spent about 71 million.
That's correct.
So we've saved 2.5 million on employee costs for whatever reasons for.
Some of that is we're just not able to fill positions. Some of that, it's a variable, a lot of different, some of us, we're just not able to fill positions. But yes, sir, we do realize that. And understand, sometimes you get criticism when it comes to a budget, and someone will say, well, you know, you've got 20 million dollars of leftover money, but if you look at it, it might be a 2% difference. I don't know anyone who has the ability to budget at 100% and be accurate every single year that they're going to bring in 100% and spend 100%. That's near impossible. If we bring in, you know, a certain amount of money and we're 2% off on it, that's a good thing. That's not a bad thing. We're not trying to take money out of our taxpayers' dollars. We're just working to make sure we don't spend it when we don't need to spend it. So I want you to be aware of that.
And a lot of people think that it's the opposite, though. A lot of people think that you've got money in leftover at the end of the year, you go to spend it so you can raise your budget the next year. That's not being done here.
We, no, sir, that is not our philosophy here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, and we, you know, unless you want to go through the items specifically for Union County Water.
No, just go back. Does anybody have any questions for the budget presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just wanted to make a parting comment. Brian, I wanted to acknowledge your hard work and your staff's hard work on this, and I applaud your efforts in working hard based on the constraints that have been imposed on you and some of the obstacles that have been put in your way. I look forward to robustly discussing and debating this budget likely at the next meeting, but I did today. Just want to thank you and applaud your efforts and the efforts of all staff that went into producing the budget and just the hard work you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richard Hams.
Yeah, Brian, question. One of the things that jumped out with me, one of the electronic copies that came to me, I went and looked at the fire departments, and it showed the only capital expense was the air tanks. And it had me digging a little further. And one of the things I don't understand is we're giving increases to other departments, other.
Other areas of the county.
Other areas of the county.
Right.
And I remember when I first came on the commission almost 10 years ago, we had a situation with the Sheriff's Department, and they were the lowest-paid law enforcement in the area. That's what I remember, Sheriff. You know, we're back there again.
We're.
And we're losing employees, not just in the Sheriff's Department, but in our fire departments, and we're not addressing.
Okay.
Why, why is there not something in our budget to help maintain? Because I guarantee you, I know for a fact personally that fire is very expensive to train and get these young people up that can go into fire. Same thing with law enforcement. Why are we not addressing that? We're taking money out of the general fund and giving it to other departments. We need to, we, in the beginning of the thing, it says our main concern is health and safety.
Certainly.
We need to talk with our money instead of just putting it on paper, because I've professed all along that health and safety is one of the most important functions that this board does.
Certainly. Good questions, sir. I'm sorry.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see some improvements by the 19th that address. I know that their, Sheriff, I may be speaking out of turn, but I know that there's a, their technology department, there's a dire need for another headcount. So, you know, why can't, why can't we address that?
Well, I'll ask a question about the fire department stuff. The direction we were given is a no tax rate increase. That is the direction we were given. The board can always give us a direction to change that, and you can allow a rate increase for your fire departments. We went to the structure model that we have now in order to fund requests for fire departments. But we also understand that, you know, guess what? At some point in time, the taxpayers are still having to pay that cost. You keep raising the rate, the taxpayers are the ones funding that. So this board, whether it was a majority or all of you or some of you, gave us the direction that the rates were going to stay flat. You don't fund employees with your savings account. You fund employees with reoccurring dollars. So we would not recommend any kind of employee compensation without a rate increase, honestly, because that's the only way you're going to fund that. That's reoccurring dollars. When it comes to capital, well, that's a different question. We've tried to accommodate as much of the capital as we can accommodate within the structure that we have. The board can always choose to say you want to fund capital in some other direction. I'm okay with that. I've tried to be as balanced, and our staff's tried to be as balanced as we can, but there's always some folks that benefit and some folks that don't benefit. It's impossible for me to make everyone happy unless, of course, we do a tax rate increase. And I'm not asking for a tax rate increase. So unless the board wants to consider rate increases, we can't fund everything that everyone's asked for. And I'll need direction from the board if that's the direction you want to go. We're certainly happy to consider that.
Brian.
That is the simple answer.
Brian, can I, can I add something about the fire departments?
Sure.
While the tax rates remain the same, there was growth in every fire department. And there are certain fire departments this year that in their budget documentation said they were going to increase pay for their members. Now, that is a individual department decision. Each one of those department is an independent agencies and can make those decisions, but the fact that their tax rate remains the same, they still got more money than they got last year. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Did any, did we do any, when the revow came and the property values went up, did the last board cut any rates to the fire departments? Were there any rate cuts last year?
I'd have to go back and look, but I think there were some that went up and some that went down.
Because their rate caught what they needed.
It was based on the need of that department. Yes, sir.
Maybe that could be a good thing to bring to that next board, too.
Sure.
So rates, most went up, they didn't go down.
There may have been some that went, there may have been some that went down based on their request and their needs.
Whether they're a true volunteer department or a mix.
Sure. There could have been some. I'm, we're not going to know off the top of our heads, but we can bring that back to you and say how many went up, how many went down.
I'd be curious to see that along with Commissioner Richard Hams.
Certainly. And again, I'm not discounting what you're saying, Commissioner Hams. I don't disagree with you. But there's only, the pie is only so big, and at some point in time, we have to say, well, how do we divvy up the pie and be as equitable as possible? And I think what we've presented is reasonable, but we will take direction from the board. If you wish us to make changes, we will absolutely do that, certainly.
Well, your example with the fire department, that's a little more legitimate with the tax rates, but it doesn't address the needs we have in the Sheriff's Department.
So I will tell you that from the Sheriff's Department's structure, and then Sheriff, I had a conversation on this, and I value, you know, his request and what he needs. What he and I have discussed is, first off, we've assisted them in helping them with some bonus money in order for retainage for their staff. And that's one-time money. That's in order to let them understand that, listen, it's important. We want to make sure that they know that we recognize they are underpaid compared to some of their other agencies around here. Second, we are doing a class and compensation study. We don't know where the results are going to be until we get those results. know where the results are going to be until we get those results. And so it would be premature for us to make salary changes to those members until we know really what that is. And the last part of it is with the IT request. I think our philosophy is that sometimes a centralized function for IT is oftentimes a better way to look at IT. I'm not saying that the sheriff's request has to be decentralized or centralized. I think that's a discussion that he and I need to have after the budget is adopted and see, moving forward, what's our strategy to accommodate centralized versus decentralized. And when I say that in is that we don't need to pay for redundant positions that do the same thing. That's, that, that really doesn't make any sense. Also, though, there are times when a position is solely only going to operate within the counties, within the sheriff's office function, and maybe that needs to reside only in the sheriff's function. And so that's a conversation he and I will sit down, will work, go through a strategy for that. And if it warrants that we really do need a position specific to the sheriff's office, then I'll recommend that. If it really is a centralized position where we can keep it internal to IT, but that will support the sheriff's department, then I would recommend that. But I, my goal is, let's not spend money just for the sake of spending it. Let's have a plan and a strategy that makes sense. And, and I'm hopeful that the sheriff recognizes that, that we have a goal, and my goal is to, is to accommodate his request as best as possible.
Oh, question.
So Brian, is the compensation study currently underway?
It is.
When did it begin? And when do you anticipate having a report on all, all of these positions?
So when it began, I don't know the exact date. It is, we, we do anticipate we'll have that information late summer. We'll certainly, at the staff level, start to dig into that, likely bring those results back to the board in the fall, then get the board to give some direction on whether or not, how you want, but, because here's the thing, there's going to be a price tag that comes with it. How do you fund all of these changes that come with it? Is the two million dollars that we've set aside in this budget enough? Or is it more than enough? And those are decisions that you'll have to make. But we anticipate it will likely be the fall before that's in front of you and you're making that decision.
Brian, that started in April of this year.
April, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brian Hams, do you have any questions?
No.
The rate study, you know, I understand we, those positions for school resource officers. There's two positions that sound like management positions.
They are, correct. They're command staff.
So they won't, they, they like, is one going to be at a school and one going to be at another school? So we'll have six covered schools or?
No, so it's, it actually is a sergeant and then a captain. And the sheriff can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but my understanding is that the SRO program right now does not really have a command person over SRO. They're blended into another function. That's my understanding. This would allow, I'm sorry, this would allow them to be able to have...
Sheriff, is that you back there? Is that, is that right or wrong?
Come on up, come on up.
Okay.
Well, sheriff can say if it's right. But the goal here is to make sure that that program has adequate resources for management on that. And we were, we actually worked with the sheriff's office on that request.
While we wait on him, I just want everyone here and watching virtually to know that there is no school that is not being covered. The sheriff department has done a great job over the years. We can't hire fifty-three SROs all at one time and equip them and train them and get everything there. So we've had, over the past several years, a request each year until we are one-to-one. But even that handful of schools, it may be in an area that is very close in proximity with another school where they could be there in three to five minutes. I know that happened recently in one of our more rural schools, and the SRO was able to be there in a matter of minutes. So I just want everyone to understand these schools, that we are still attempting to get one-to-one, they do not go uncovered. And, and if there was an emergency until the SRO could get, you know, three or five miles from the other elementary, we still have our highway patrol units or any other law enforcement that is in that area that can respond to the school. But I think our sheriff department and Monroe Police and Waxaw and Stallings have done an amazing job to help cover our schools.
Thank you. You did a good job. We, we do make every effort we can to cover all the schools, and we have made it over several years. And then we had some sick people and had to slow down. And COVID, you know, it set everything back. And now we're beginning to move forward again. We've asked for four school resource officers, a sergeant and a captain. The reason is, we've always operated over the years as a combination that the captain over detectives and CSI handled that. But we're getting to the point now we'll be bumping about forty school resource officers. So we feel like we need to move it out from under our detectives, because they've got all they can handle anyway, and put a captain over it, and then put a fifth sergeant, which fills in in the schools. If there's sickness, our officers are sick, if they have to be in training, those sergeants fill in for them. And they check on those school resource officers. They run safety checks on these schools. They do a lot of stuff.
So they would be in the school, the sergeant?
Oh, yeah, they're in the school. All of them are in the school.
That's what I was wanting to know, because anything that we can do to help make sure our schools are safe and covered is important. We've even spoke, I spoke to the manager, and I think Patrick as well, about possibly using the EMS. You know, we have to find seven locations, eight locations around the county to base our emergency service ambulance and places like that. I think schools would be a lot better than renting or building a little building or, or doing something like that. I think that having them there where they're needed, in case anything does happen one way or the other. We've had children choking and, and things like that. Wouldn't it be great not only to have a deputy and an RSO there, but actually a EMT and a paramedic? So, so that's, please understand. And, and did you get any COVID bonus money from the?
No.
So our deputies who worked all that time in the past during COVID didn't get bonus money?
No, no. We, we haven't got any bonus money until the future's coming, a little bit of bonus money that's coming through the county manager and commissioners. I actually don't know who all is involved in it, but...
Well, I think we would all support our deputies getting some of that money. You already should have received.
As long as you said that, just let me tell you. We answered every call through COVID. We responded to officers, sick people, heart attacks, all the things that the EMS did. They did the same thing. We answered every call. The jail operated every day. We battled COVID in the jail. All those officers there, every, we didn't, but we'd know. The answer is no, we didn't get it.
You didn't get any high-risk money?
No, didn't get none.
I apologize for that.
I think it was called hazard pay during COVID and...
I don't know how it was handled, but...
Thank you.
But I can tell you, we didn't get it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Sheriff.
Sheriff.
Sheriff, Brian.
Sorry, just, just one real quick question. Mr. Matthews had mentioned that with the addition of these four new SROs, then that leaves us with approximately five more positions left.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
That's correct.
All right, thank you, sir. And I will say too, Sheriff, I was at a Union County public school earlier in the week to attend in the school program, and there was an incident that happened there at, at the school. And I won't go into detail about what that incident was, but what I will say is, is the response from our, our sheriff's deputies there was outstanding and, and very appreciative of it.
Well, we're going to respond, and because that SRO is in the schools, that's fine. But we're putting everything else to come behind it. I mean, we're going to respond to that school. You can count on that.
Yes, sir. And, and that's, that's exactly what I witnessed. There was multiple deputies there dispatched, and the response was great. So thank you, sir.
All right.
And Sheriff, at some meeting, we need to get those RSOs to come in. Don't need to be the budget passed, but if we can get them here to lead us in the pledge, that'd be fantastic to show everybody all the people working in our schools.
You give me about, go ahead and give me them other five, and we'll bring them all up here.
Bring the new hires and everything.
We'll bring all of them.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You made a mistake by telling the sheriff, bring it on in here. That's all right.
I told him not next meeting when we're voting on the budget.
It's all right. Any additional questions for me, board members?
Okay. We had one speaker for the public hearing, no, two speakers, I believe. We've got Terry Williams. Terry, you here? Terry, sorry to have to keep you waiting so long with that.
That's quite all right. My name is Terry Williams. I'm a resident of Mecklenburg County. I'd like to thank the chairman and the board for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding the budget. I do represent landowners along the Idowald Road corridor in Union County between 485 and Stevens Mill Road in the Stallings area. These landowners have owned the land for decades. They're not just out-of-town investors. They've owned the land and paid taxes for years. And I was here to share our support for the modest price increase to the water and sewer rates, to provide for some funding for the expansion of the Twelve Mile Creek wastewater treatment plant and other important needs in the, in the water system. And I thought it was appropriate on the budgeting night to share a little bit of what we project within, how that land can be used and developed in the future, how it may affect your all's budget as well. There's two projects on that corridor that are mixed-use projects. At least fifty percent or more are commercial on, on the corridor. And there'll be about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of development. Of that, that would be about five million dollars that the developers would spend to widen Idowald Road. They would also, developers would also be spending money to extend sewer and water infrastructure to serve the projects. Once those projects are built out, there's huge revenue potential on both the property and sales tax associated with the development of those projects. Now, we look at the town of Stallings could potentially receive seven-hundred-fifty-thousand dollars a year once those projects are built out. And the county could benefit from an additional two million dollars in year in property and sales tax combined. There are likely other projects besides ours that are going to benefit from the continued expansion of the sewer system. But I just want to make sure that I shared the specifics of ours with you. And the property owners have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars going through the approvals process and waiting for sewer. And we're looking forward to sewer capacity eventually being available, and even if we have to wait a few more years to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Greg, Gregory, Chief, tell me what, Sharp?
Sharp. Yep, that's me.
He looks like Sharper, but...
Yes, well, I have a terrible handwriting. I wanted to be a doctor when I started out, so that's where my signature came from. It's a, it's a disaster. It also comes from my dad. He used to, he was left-handed, and he always, I watched him sign his checks.
Using your time, Chair.
I'm beginning my timeout?
I think you're... You started this, man. I'll give you a couple of...
All right. Good evening, Chairman Rushing, Vice Chair Merrill, the rest of the commissioners, county manager, the rest of the county staff. I just want to quickly provide some additional information on the Waxaw Fire Department's FY24 budget request. I would like to recognize the county manager for following the guidance of the board of commissioners in his proposed budget. He had guidelines from you, and he followed them. I have a mandate from those the fire department serves, which is to provide fire protection that meets national fire protection standards and that we arrive on the scene in less than eight minutes, eighty percent of the time. This mandate is supported by a recent survey where ninety-two percent of respondents expect an eight-minute response time. Sixty-five percent support a property tax increase to reduce emergency response times, increase firefighter staffing levels, and improve safety for Waxaw firefighters. These numbers are similar to those received in a survey from 2017. These are also backed up by all the residents and business owners that I talked to. They all want a fire department that responds quickly with enough people to make the rescue and get it done. We now respond in nine minutes and twenty-eight seconds, eighty percent of the time, leaving us a one-minute and twenty-eight-second gap. County staff and I developed a plan three years ago to meet this mandate. The plan involved a federal safer grant, of which a hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars drops off this year. We built our request based on that plan, which involved focusing on two goals. Meet the critical needs of the fire department for FY24 to improve service towards NFPA 1720, and keep the tax rate as close to neutral as possible. We identified three critical needs for FY24. These needs were dealt through conversations within the organization, with the residents we serve, and through a strategic study conducted by North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting, the fire service consultants for the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The critical needs are, one, provide a wage for our members that is competitive with the market. This improves recruitment and retention, improves recruitment of more experienced firefighters, includes development path for volunteer and paid members, and saves thousands of dollars in costs when we replace a firefighter who leaves our department. Second, provide consistent supervision and leadership for our young crews. This improves the safety of our crews and improves the effectiveness of our fire department. Third, provide funding for Station 64 on Kensington Drive. This allows us to utilize the design and construction assets from our current construction project on Waxaw Creek Road, which could save us approximately one million dollars in design and construction costs. That also would allow us to leverage that money with state and federal officials on securing additional funds for this station, possibly saving the taxpayers of Union County approximately six million dollars. The Waxaw Fire Department request from the county was three-point-five million, while the proposed budget from the county manages three-point-one million. If we move forward with the proposed budget from the county manager, we will not be able to meet any of the above priorities. To just meet the first priority causes us to operate a projected one-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. In FY25, the remainder of the grant will expire, and we will absorb the remainder of those funds, which equals four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand dollars. The county manager's staff followed your guidance, and I am asking you to support our fire department, meeting the mandate that I get from our residents and business owners of Waxaw to be in compliance with national standards. Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind hanging on a second, I spoke to Patrick, I got your email this morning and went through it. The grant situation, is that something that the county approved when, when they went through the grant, or did we find out about it after it was applied for?
Chief Sharp let us know once they were awarded that they had received the safer grant.
Okay. And the grant, how mu, and there's a, there's a, something about maybe a fire department that you're building, a how many, five, four, five million dollar fire department?
The one on Waxaw Creek, yes.
Yeah, so it...
Has gone from three million when we first went to budget for it.
Right.
And then it got pushed off and pushed off, and now it's five-point-six.
Okay, so the, so the, like, Indian Trail put, how many ladder trucks did y'all buy at Indian Trail? How many?
Ladder trucks did y'all buy at Indian Trail?
Three. We authorized four-point, four-point-five billion for three ladder trucks, Indian Bridge, Stallings, and Pakers.
So Indian Trail bought three ladder trucks for the fire department. Have you gotten any money from your local town with ARPA funding or anything like that?
Not ARPA funding. They donated, they're donating two million dollars in land for the station on Kensington.
For the, for the new fire department?
Yeah, on Kensington.
Okay.
There's, not the current one that we're building. That's Waxaw Creek and unincorporated.
The one you're going to build?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, one concern is that, you know, if, if all the fire departments went out and applied for that grant, and then came back to us and said, well, the grant went away, but the funding needs are still there, it would put us all in a bind as far as budgeting. So in the future, please get with everybody before you apply for the grant, or, you know, before you spend that money, because that's real important that we can keep. It happened in the late nineties with five hundred new cops on the street. If you remember, the Clinton administration proposed putting five hundred, new thousand, maybe, new cops on the street.
Right.
And, and then those monies went away, and several towns created police departments, and then the money went away, and they, they had to lay people off. It was, it was a disaster. So we've got to be very careful about that.
So, so we didn't accept the grant without approval from the county.
Okay.
We put it in, we got it. I went to Patrick, we talked about it, we built a plan. Because I told him, I said, if we can't build a plan, then I won't accept it. I didn't have to accept it.
Okay.
And we built a plan, so I accepted, because I said, I'm not going to accept it if we can't take it on later, because I'm not going to hire guys and then lay them off in three years.
Right.
It's not going to happen. So there was conversation.
There were conversations, and I would say it was a strategy. And at the time...
Yes.
We could not commit future boards to...
Correct.
Rate increases or funding levels. And at the time, there were certain capital needs that were less than they are today. So I agree, there was a plan. I think conditions have changed over the last three years, and county manager has changed, and the board has changed. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Right. And that's why I'm just bringing you information that...
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Merrill has a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
So this grant, can you apply for an extension? Because it, it does not allow you to apply for an extension.
It's three years and over. We got lucky that in COVID, they decide, it used to have a, a match. Like, you got twenty, you got seventy-five percent of the funds first year, seventy-five second year, and then you had to cover two-thirds of it the third year. When COVID hit, they said there is no match. So we got the full funding for three years, and we've done a good job over the last two, building in money to be ready for it to come off. This year is the one year we haven't taken that little bit of a step to make sure we're good next year, because it's coming, it's going to come next year. And, you know, I just, that's all I want, is to give you all information. And, you know, I just, that's all I want, is to give you all information that, you know, we built a plan, and yes, you're correct, Patrick. We, we did, we didn't commit future boards, we had a plan for the time. And I just wanted you to know what that plan was, so that you can make that decision.
Well, I thank you for the extra time, I know you may not have been prepared to answer questions, you do real well. I don't envy your job, because Waxaw's a packed traffic town. It's, it's full of people going here and there and everywhere, and the fact that you have to get there in such time, you know, is very important that you can get through that traffic. I don't see how y'all do it. And I heard there's a movie coming to Waxaw, and it's a buddy road trip movie, and, uh...
Yeah.
I, I was wondering if it's gonna be a horror movie going up and down 16, but we'll see.
I'm not sure if they're still there, because the trailers are gone. They were piled up over Waxaw Creek Parkway East, but they're gone now, so...
Well, thank you for what you do, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody that signed up for the public comments would like to speak now? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments. And close the, close the, I'm looking through my stuff here. So, yeah, public hearing for the budget. Next, we have the consent agenda. And anybody would like to take something off the consent agenda? Commissioner Williams, you had a couple that you took off already, are they already off?
Well, they're already, they've already been moved to business.
Okay. Commissioner Brian Helms, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to remove items 23-338. That is our budget amendment, Medicaid Enhanced Claiming Hold Harmless and Medicaid Expansion.
What page is that on?
That would be page 10 of our agenda packet. But I would like to move that to business for discussion, please. And then also, 23-341, which is our special revenue ordinance amendment, Public Health Infrastructure Local Workforce Development Agreement Addendum. So both of those items I'd like to move for discussion, please.
So item number, what was the first one?
23-338.
I'm looking on page 10, and I'm not seeing it on this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have told you the wrong...
Okay, and then the other item was number...
23-341.
Okay. And we'll put those, well... Do what?
Nothing. Yeah, page numbers.
So, any others, Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms, you have any? Commissioner Merrill? Okay, all those in favor of making those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So we're, we will put those at 23, behind 23-348. So we'll do, that's the last item on the agenda before county manager's comments. So 23-338, after that, and then 23-341, next. Okay. Next, we go to business.
Adopt consent.
Motion to adopt consent agenda is amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, we also need to add a couple items to the agenda. After that, we need to add an item to move, I move to consider the appointment of county attorney to the business portion of the agenda. And the, let's make that, the item after 340. Do I need to move that up? Okay, motion to add that to the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, now to business. Item 23-307, which is ARPA Revenue Grant Project Ordinance Budget Amendment. Who's gonna take that one, Brian?
Clayton?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if you'll remember last time, at the last regular meeting, I provided a presentation on an overview of ARPA, the, all the actions that the board has taken since we received the funding, as well as some recommendations for appropriating those funds. There's no official presentation for this item, but this essentially are all those things that we recommended that the board approve. And so we brought all the documents, the capital project ordinances and the grant project ordinance that would codify those recommendations. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any, we also have our finance director, Beverly Lyles, to answer any questions.
Commissioner Williams, you had these, you know, these officers, are there any questions that you have?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did request earlier last week to have this move from consent to business. Clayton, could you just kind of summarize for us where the money is moving from, and where it's going to, what the proposal is there?
Yes, so you'll see in the, in the background as well, but we, there was some, originally some funding made available through the ARPA-enabled projects. Those were the Public Safety Training Center, as well as the Farmers Market Enclosure. Those funds, or those projects were deemed as, either we were no longer pursuing those, or they were potentially other available funds for those projects. And so those were, those ARPA-enabled projects were removed. We were also removing the Yadkin Distribution Line for the 762 Zone Main, which was 10 million, from the ARPA-enabled projects. And that created the funding available for the Crooked Creek Interceptor project of 16 million. In addition, one other change was the movement of the Indian Trail Water Line for Emerald Woods to an ARPA-enabled project, due to the size of that project and the potential procurement concerns and requirements that were, we were concerned about, due to the small size of that project.
Okay, thank you.
So you have, you just moved those to other funding sources?
They're essentially ARPA-enabled projects. If you're talking about the Indian Trail Water Line, that's an ARPA-enabled project, so in other words, the funding that is freed up from funds that we spent on revenue replacement, as well as rehiring public sector staff, that freed up funding in the general funds to be able to fund these projects, which would relieve us from some of those federal requirements related to procurement. For the Farmers Market and the Public Safety Training Center, those are no longer ARPA projects, no longer ARPA-enabled projects, we removed those completely.
Okay, and, and again, this keeps coming up, the Farmers Market Enclosure, we are or are not going to try to do that?
We do not intend on doing that.
Right, good, because that, you know, we talked about that from time to time, about that concern. We talked, you know, we talked more about it, but it's, yeah, it's taken off right now, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on this item? Anyway, we'll make a motion to accept the item. I'll make a motion that we, get the board to read. Okay, the ARPA Special Revenue Grant Project Ordinance Budget, I move that we approve that. That was taken off and then put on the regular agenda, item 23-307. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll be voting against the motion. This item is really, it's a good example of the straining and stumbling that we've been doing in this fiscal year, and then as we look into the next one, to try to cobble together enough funds to finish this project and that project, to largely have, you know, just reams of projects that remain on the halted list. This is just not how you, you know, competently and thoughtfully manage, you know, a timeline of capital projects in a water and sewer system. But yet, this is how we're doing it. You know, we're, we're trying just to gather together enough money, you know, by doing a 1.75% rate increase, by, you know, taking $10 million, I'll say that again, $10 million from the Yadkin Distribution Line that we had planned to go through Wengit. And so we can try to meet other needs that this current board considers a priority within water and sewer. Well, you know, this, this Yadkin Distribution Line especially, just really shocks me. Because many know that, or may not know, but many know in here that Wengit was an applicant with Union County for the Yadkin IBT. And to my, and I, I think I'm not wrong about this, but I think on the prior board, it was Chairman Rushing that suggested a parallel distribution line through Wengit for Yadkin Water. So I find it just ironic and thoroughly disappointing that Wengit, who was with us at the very beginning of this Yadkin Project, who was a co-applicant with us, who went and made, advocated on behalf of Union County with state regulators to get this IBT, I, I find it shocking, and it's a bit of a slap in the face to Wengit, honestly, that they're not going to get this distribution line, that, you know, Wengit certainly needs, they have, they have plans for Wengit, for Wengit development, that this would be important for. The university certainly could use this distribution line there. And it's, it's ironic in another sense too, because some on this board have, you know, complained for a long time now, that, you know, people on the east, you know, they need water. And here's a great example of an opportunity. We had an opportunity to bring water through Wengit for folks in the eastern part of the county. Yet now, we're going to take this $10 million in ARPA funds and use it basically in the Crooked Creek Interceptor. So I, I'm just, I'm disappointed in that, I'm disappointed in the funds that are taken away from the Public Training Center. You know, you know, we entertained briefly, I guess, that there might even be a driving pad that the sheriff, the sheriff and perhaps SBC might be able to use, that the county would contribute to, to building. But it's just, you know, I'm thoroughly disappointed all the way around, not just in what's not funded here, but in what this is a symptom of. What, the, the games that we're playing here with moving money around, modest increases in the rate structure, taking one-time dollars, $19 million of accumulated fund balance in water and sewer, that it's not coming back, we use this one time this coming fiscal year, that's it. But these are the financial games, you know, that were, were, not games, but these are the financial moves that we're engaging in, just to try to stumble and strain from this fiscal year into the next, you know, to make sure that particular pet projects are funded. You know, that's not the responsible, that's not the thoughtful way to run a water and sewer utility. And so, again, I'll be voting against this motion, and I'm just, I find it ironic, again, disappointing, but yes, symptomatic of a larger problem that's, that's going on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I...
Commissioner Brian Helms?
Thank you, sir. I'll be voting in favor of the motion. You know, as far as cobbling together funds, what I'll say is this, is that, you know, you can, you can, you can say that we're cobbling together funds all you want to. The way that I look at it is, is we're trying to be responsible with the money that Union County ratepayers, or for that matter, taxpayers, invest in the system, rather than overspending on, on commitments or projects that maybe we can't pay for. We're trying to look at this as being fiscally responsible, and do the things that we know that we can afford, and the things that we know that we can accomplish. So if we have symptoms, then, in my opinion, we're looking at symptoms of fiscal responsibility.
I would like to echo those comments, Commissioner Brian Helms. I want to remind everyone that Union County received $46.5 million in, in ARPA funds. And this motion that we're discussing right now is 16 million. So if we really want to talk about mismanagement or stumbling, then maybe we need to go back and look at the other 30 million before this motion. I plan to support the $16 million, based on staff's recommendation on their prioritization of projects in order to get the Crooked Creek Interception, Interceptor Expansion Project done in the timeframe that the ARPA funds demand. The projects that you are referring to cannot be completed under the current guidelines of when that money has to be, and those projects have to be complete. So, Mr. Chair, I plan to support this motion for $16 million of the $46.5 million that were received.
Mr. Richard Helms, you have?
Yeah, I, I'll tell you that I will not support this change. I think Commissioner Williams was spot on. I know that, I remember Crooked Creek and the changes being chastised the very first part of the year. You've got to make up your mind which way you're going to go. And so, the, some of the, some of the projects that they wanted to do, they're taking it away from, would be beneficial to our public, public safety groups. And like I said, it's one-time money, so I will not be supporting this change.
Okay. Here's what I have to say about it, I've got some memories too. And the sheriff's department is looking for a driving pad, that I believe that SBCC is also looking for a driving pad. So we can have two driving pads in the county, or we can have one. And we can use that money for commercial development along the 74 corridor for Stallings and Indian Trail, which is something we've committed to them to do and to help them, because we want to get our residential to commercial tax base up, which is currently at 90% residential tax base, unheard of, just crazy. We wanted a 60-40 at one time, we're not, we're going the other direction. I also remember Commissioner Helms that voted with me to not raise the rate 33% years ago for the Yadkin Project. And then I remember Commissioner Williams that voted for, with me, with, I think made the motion to cut the rate back 33% as soon as he got into office. Somewhere seen the light, and both of you guys have seen the light, that 33% was okay after all, even though you had just voted against it. So, you know, when we look at memories, the people of Union County have memories too, and they don't remember either one of y'all campaigning on raising rates 33%, 22%, and 7% a year for every year from now on, if it's going to be that, and not even more. In a couple of years, we might have a downturn in the economy like we did in 2008. It's already moving in that direction when we have higher interest rates, problems getting equipment building. And then what do we do? Then what do we do when we build a $300 million sewer plant? Then we have to pay for it, and people's rates go up 75%, 100%, what is it? So what we're trying to do on your sewer water issue is make sure that we can handle the people at Emerald Woods. Make sure that we can handle the citizens that have applied and paid for water service, and try to come up with ways to fund more water service, like we all have been interested in doing in the past. It's just somehow now, it's, you know, you don't understand the plan. But a lot of people didn't understand why you both didn't support a 33% rate increase and then did, and then threw a 22% rate increase on top of that. People don't understand, but we're going to try to clear it up for everybody, so thank you both for your memories, and I'm sharing my memories, and with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Three to two. Okay, next, we have wastewater pump station grant. Brian, you're gonna take that one? Brian, you going to take that one?
So if the board may recall, I know Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms is not here at this meeting, so this is new for him. Previously, the board had adopted a policy for evaluating pump stations requests for projects. And what we have here is, this is a carryover from a previous meeting where the board deferred action on this particular request. It's called the Oakwood Pump Station Request. It's intended to serve a development along, gosh, I can't remember the name of the road there. Anyway, this is the southwest corner of intersection of Unionville, Indian Trail Road, Seacrest Shortcut. This product, in pink here, is the proposed development. There is currently two pump stations that are, that are in this vicinity of this area. This particular project, if you were to approve it, is actually what we call a zero net gain for a pump station. What that means is they're not proposing that we add a brand-new pump station. They're proposing that we eliminate a pump station and then build a new pump station in a different location to serve a much greater service area. So you essentially have a net zero. You get rid of an old one, you replace it with a new one. That new pump station would serve a greater area. It would be new. We do have some constraints with the existing pump station, and some of those issues have to do with the flow and how it operates and the limitations we have with that current pump station. There is another solution to the project. It is, in our, in our opinion, not necessarily a great solution. You would actually gravity flow that project to another pump station and then have to basically pump all the way around. That creates its own problems. It creates additional pressure on other pump stations, which would then have to be upgraded in order to be able to handle that. Oftentimes, when we present these requests to the board, you know, we're relatively neutral on these items. And I will say, in this particular manner, staff would recommend the approval of this, mainly because it is a no-net zero, it's a net-zero effect. It does have a benefit in that we are eliminating an older pump station. We are upgrading that pump station with newer equipment, so it has a longer life cycle now because it is new. And we can actually expand the area that can be served so we can see additional development in that area. While we don't, we don't control that development in that area, it's our understanding that the jurisdictions that are in that, are in that area do intend on seeing some commercial, industrial, and mixed use for that project. So for those reasons, we would recommend the board consider approving the pump station. The developer is here and his representative, his and her developer representatives are here. If you have additional questions, I'm happy to go over it in more detail, but it's, in our position, this is a no-net increase when it comes to pump stations, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms.
It's not free to build a new pump station.
No, the developer would be responsible for the cost of building the pump station. And then all, at that point in time, once it's turned over to the county, then we operate it. So electrical costs, maintenance costs do become our cost after that, but the cost of construction is borne by the developer. Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Commissioner Helms.
Too many Helmses.
Too many Helmses.
So you said that this request would eliminate or take offline one of the, one of the older pumps, pump stations.
Yes, ma'am.
And we did, did we have R&amp;R or maintenance coming up that was going to cost the county money, money to keep that older pump station going?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
So I was just curious about the zero net gain and if we're actually saving money on maintenance of an older pump station.
Sure. When I say, when I say zero, I mean like total number of pump stations. Obviously, we didn't evaluate what the actual dollar change is. Honestly, yes, we were programming that we would have some maintenance costs for the older pump station. I don't have that dollar amount in front of me. We were intending on having to do some upgrades to that. Now we will not, so those dollars obviously get, we able to hold on to those dollars. If the board approves the pump station, then obviously that money could then be used to help pay for the maintenance for some period of time on that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, real quick, I did notice that the gallons per day usage was based off of a value of 190?
Yes, sir. I believe that's correct.
Now, remind me, is that not a deviation from what we previously used, the value that we previously used to calculate, you know, residential structure and how much capacity it would require?
So a lot of that has to do with the type of project that it is. So the type of project can dictate a lower amount of gallons that you use for that. Single-family homes generally have a higher value that we have. Apartment and townhome projects can have lower, lower gallons that they can actually accommodate on that. So it depends on the project.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Richard Helms.
This is a project that they want to build.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Have they, do they already, have they purchased the capacity?
So they're not allowed to go through the development agreement process until they're able to move forward with engineering approval. This is a step towards that direction. So if the board says, yes, we're okay with a pump station, then they would begin their full engineering, submittal and design and approval. Once they go through that, then yes, they would have to have a developer's agreement which secures the capacity for them.
Is that Crooked Creek?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? And Todd being here, I don't, we already had the public hearing, but I have, Todd reached out to Indian Trail and asked about the plans. Can you tell us what the plans are for this area? You're on the.
I have to look, but.
It's, can we zoom back out?
I do know this, our staff has said this pump station needs to be replaced. So it's in bad shape.
So this, what we see and the concern that I have is what is going to go up around this? Because while we have capacity for this, what's going to go in the rest of Indian Trail? If you're looking at light industrial, if you're looking at commercial, light industrial, or are you looking at apartments?
There's a, in this area somewhere, years ago, they approved a grocery store, a mixed use with 800 apartments in this area. The developer told our planning department that they're looking at it, they'll scale back some of the apartments because it was funky, kind of weird how it was approved. In other words, we kind of have to approve it or get sued, you know, is pretty much the deal. But so if, so if developer wants to bring that, it's in that area. I think there's a gas station going over here, isn't there?
I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, but yeah, I mean, I couldn't tell you what it's zoned, but yeah, I mean, it's, this pump station certainly, I would say for light industrial, something in there or commercial, because I know people on that side would really like to have that grocery store, for example, you know, because there's not one on that side. And I think it was supposed to be a Publix, from what I said, but that's, you know, down the road. I don't know if that project has water and sewer. So.
Well, the problem would be that if, I tend to support pump stations because it's time to be replaced anyways. And if a developer will replace it, that will save us some of that R&amp;R money. But, you know, the, the commercial aspect of it's great, but if you put in a bunch of residential there, you have to be careful because you could be using up your capacity for the commercial projects that are already for that.
Well, the developer's really nice because he was willing to scale back the number of apartments that was approved. I mean, he was willing to go from 800 to less than 200. But you're right, we understand that approving residential is going to use up capacity and, you know, and that's a valid point and, you know, and that would certainly, with the pump station, would have to be a consideration for the town. Yes, sir.
And when we're using, when we're using this money, the ARPA money, whatever we're using to outfit this, we're also looking at an allocation policy, which may help here for future projects of, you know, commercial, things like that, that the county may hold some capacity that we can share with the towns for that. So we're looking at those kinds of things, too. But just so you know, and I'm glad that you've got commercial aspects in this, I will support it because of the, replacing the old pump station, I'm sure, needs to be replaced.
Yes, sir.
It's not, it's not adding a pump station to the system. It's, it's actually, it's, I use net zero, it hasn't taken all of them off, and it just takes it the direction and runs it a different way. There's no gravity option to this?
The gravity option still is to a pump station.
Right. So the gravity's, pump station, pump station.
Still have to go to a pump station.
Okay. I'll be in support of it.
Well, I can't speak for everybody else on the town, but I appreciate it, you know, so.
Well, it is Indian Trail and we want to work with you on this and.
Thank you.
Help you out, but understand.
Faces around here change, but you're always here, I noticed.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
I would like to make a motion to approve the application request concerning the Oakwood development for the replacement of a wastewater pump station. SH Pump Station solution is set forth in the application associated with this request in accordance with Section 34-336B1 of the Union County Code and to adopt the utility-based rationale statement for approval.
Okay. Any questions on that? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Richard, you both.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the, let's see. Modify Finance Best Management Practices Debt Issuance.
Yes, sir.
And who's taking that, Brian?
I want Beverly to talk about that.
Scott, Brian, but Beverly will take it.
This was, this was originally pulled off of, I believe, the agenda because there were some questions about it. This has to do with the board's request, and Beverly can answer questions if you have specific questions. She looked at me like deer in the headlights. Remember, the board had, had requested that we have a policy for having general obligation bonds for when you have expansion projects for water and sewer. And this is a policy change, so there's a policy for the board to consider adopting specifically for those projects. Now, this would not apply to the 12 Mile Creek expansion from seven and a half to nine. If the board approves the budget with the rate increase for that, we would fund that with revenue bonds and other, other PEGO sources to be able to fund that. But any future expansions of 12 Mile Creek would require a GO bond per this policy. And then there's also a second item, which has to do with the policy for how we deal with our reserves, our 365-day reserve requirements, because depreciation is currently part of the reserve calculation. We would be changing our policy so that that reserve would no longer be calculated than that. We could use those reserves for funding capital projects. So that's what those two items would address. If I missed something, Beverly, you can certainly correct me if I missed something.
You covered it.
Thank you.
All right. So we've talked about this and talked about doing the general obligation bonds in place of the revenue bonds. Is there, Beverly, pros and cons?
Well, I think you've had several workshops over the past year. We had our financial advisor that came and spoke about some of the pros and cons of some of the changes that you were requesting. You know, moving, removing depreciation from your reserve does, of course, decrease your reserves. However, you'd still meet the reserve requirements based on how the credit rating agencies do those calculations. They actually take depreciation out now when they do our ratios for us.
So they don't, they don't add those to anything that they look at?
They do not.
So whether we've got 365 or 700 and something?
The only change, and Beverly can correct me, too, is it will change our cash on hand. And cash on hand is, is an item that they do look at when they're looking at your financial strength and financial stability. So obviously, it will reduce our cash on hand, and certainly, rating agencies can and will look at that. So I don't want the board to think that because it is closer to the calculation that the rating agencies use, that it could not have a negative impact. It could have a negative impact.
Who recommended GO bonds? Somebody did, one of our consultants or somebody that came, was it, I think you, Mr. Manager, you said that you, you were corrected, you, you thought we couldn't.
That's correct.
But you were told by who that we could?
I believe it was Scott Leo, our bond counsel, said that we could actually use a GO. I don't know that he recommended it. I think his, his, just, the board asked the question, I believe, in one of our work sessions, could you use them? My knee-jerk reaction was, I don't think you can. Scott Leo, the bond counsel for us who handles our bond sales, corrected us to say, yes, actually, the statutes allow for you to use GO bonds when it comes to utility projects. And this is how you'd have to do it. This is the structure. You're, you're essentially still using your rate revenue to cover those costs, but in the event, if you default, your tax revenue, your taxing authority can be used to handle that default if necessary. So he was the one who corrected us on that.
But we're not looking at default right now, right?
You would fire me if we defaulted.
That's correct.
Yeah, bad decisions usually take a while for, to manifest and bad outcomes, as sadly I think we'll probably see.
That's what I thought.
I do have some questions for Beverly, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Okay. Beverly, could you help me understand, just kind of practically, I mean, how would this work, you know, from start to finish, if we were to have a GO bond issuance that is tied to our general trust indenture that actually relies on enterprise funds to do the debt service? I mean, what is, what would be step one in that process?
Well, step one, of course, you would have to approve a bond referendum request for a water and sewer project. We have to still prove to our local government commission and to our U.S. Bank trustee that we still have the revenues in place to be able to meet our debt service coverage ratios for the increase in the expected debt service payments that would come with that bond. You have to be able to prove that, just like we do when we issue a revenue bond. We have to do a feasibility study, and we have to go through the entire process, just like we would for a revenue bond, to prove to all of those agencies that we will still meet those conditions under our bond trust indenture.
You mentioned the feasibility study. I think there's a debt service management plan that has to be.
Incorporated into that.
Go with that as well.
Yes.
Okay. So you said step one is to, you know, prepare for a, to put a general obligation in front of the voters. But, you know, this weird creature that we're talking about, a GO bond, that's actually, where the debt payments are actually handled through enterprise revenue streams, at what point in this process do you have a rate model that will actually support the debt service payments? Because, because that's, that's the real sticky part where we are right now, is we don't have a rate model that will support these capital projects. We don't even have a rate model that will support our repair and replacement projects. We don't have a rate model that will make sure that we have water pressure in parts of the county so our fire trucks, you know, can put out fires, pretty important stuff. So with this weird hybrid creature, GO bond, but actually, you know, uses enterprise revenue streams to make the debt payments, I mean, at what point in this process do we actually get a rate model that, that satisfies, that allows us to make those debt service payments and allows us to maintain our coverage ratios? I think, what, between 1.25 and 1.5, is that right?
Yes, that's.
Okay. So at what point in this process do we get the rate model? Do we adopt the rate model that will support these payments, that will allow us to put forward, you know, a feasibility study and a debt service management plan that actually will work, you know, where we're communicating this to the voters? I mean, at what point, you know, where in this do we get the rate model that's going to make this possible?
Well, this is a new situation for Union County. We've not done a GO bond since I've been here for water and sewer. So I would actually need to follow up on that and see if it's required before the LGC actually allows you to put that on the bond referendum, or they wait to see if your voters actually pass it, then you would go through that process.
All right. I find that very telling. I hope folks in here and watching online find that telling as well. Let me ask you. Let me ask you this. Let's say we don't have a rate model. We end up, you know, having a rate model that is inadequate, that won't meet, uh, the debt service payments. Certainly, that's the position we're in now as we stare prospectively at future bond issuance that we know we are going to need to do for water, uh, projects, for sewer projects, for repair and replacement projects. So let's say we're in a position where we don't have a rate model to support issuance that we've done of a G O bond, um, you know, uh, that is, uh, supported through enterprise revenue streams. At that point, uh, might the general obligation protections afforded general obligation bonds where, uh, if you're in default or, uh, threatening, uh, facing possible default, is that where potentially the taxpayers, uh, would have to make good on that promise?
Uh, yes, anytime you issue a general obligation bond, the backstop is your, um, taxable value and your taxpayer's money.
And those would be people, uh, with property all over the county, right?
That's correct.
Folks that might use Union County water and sewer and folks that don't. Folks that use Monroe water, Monroe sewer, have a well, have a septic tank. Taxpayers throughout Union County might be in a position where they have to support this weird creature, this weird, uh, hybrid of G O bond and revenue bond. Should we not be able to make good on our, uh, payments for it? Those are the questions I have. Thank you very much, Beverly.
Beverly, I have a question. As far as defaulting, let, let's say that the enterprise fund defaulted completely. Whether it's G O bond related or not, that, that burden would still fall to the taxpayers, correct?
Not necessarily for the revenue bond. You're supposed to cover that with your revenues of the system, water and sewer system. What would happen is we would default and we have an acceleration clause in our bond trust indenture that says at that point, they can come forward to us and we have to pay a hundred percent of our outstanding debt at that time.
Okay.
On all revenue bonds.
But it would be safe to say, though, that if this policy were to pass and, um, we took any kind of capital project, like water, sewer, a large capital project to the voters, that we would do our research beforehand, we would indicate on the bond the prospective rate increases, what we fully expect, how the impact would, would be to ratepayers. Am I correcting that assumption?
It would be the estimated.
Mm-hmm.
Impact.
And the water pressure, the Commissioner Williams just discussed, the problems with water pressure and water supply in this county, if I'm not mistaken, that was brought to us in our last meeting. Is that also correct? Because I believe that the consultant, uh, met with us in our last meeting there.
I believe that was part of their.
Brown and Caldwell's presentation.
Yeah, Brown and Caldwell, uh, reported that information to us in our last meeting. So I, I would say that it's safe to say that we haven't had time to even fully address that as of yet. And I think that, um, as staff indicated before, the rate model can be determined at any time, correct? So let's say hypothetically that a bond were to pass from the voters, then at that point, we would explore what type of rate increases we would need to make that happen. Is that a safe assumption?
Yes, you would definitely have to at that point.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
So, again, to repeat, well, if the bond is put up, a rate model could even be put in there that rates could go up, um, ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent if this bond is passed. For example, for a sewer plant, a new sewer plant. Now, when you have smaller projects, like, um, you know, if you're going to do some kind of upsizing of pipes, which we have some of those that are coming online that have to do, uh, that can be a revenue bond because it's not necessarily creating additional capacity, it's being able to use the capacity that you already have.
That's correct. The direction the board gave us was to update the policy to only do G O bonds for projects. That expands the capacity significantly of our system.
So for example, the Crooked Creek Interceptor projects, which makes the lines bigger so that more waste can be conveyed on them, that's not a, that's not a G O bond project, right, in this policy?
Correct, if it doesn't expand the capacity of the system.
Okay, so if we had one on increasing the water, uh, flow to get the pressures up in all over Union County, we could do something like that. Let's say it was a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred million dollars. We could put that up for a bond. If it passed, the voters would have to have the say in that if we did a bond like that for G O bonds. Or if we did a new sewer plant, the voters of the county. How many people have to pass a revenue bond? How many votes do you need to get a revenue bond of three hundred million dollars?
Oh, your, your, the board's vote.
How many?
Your, your vote, the board has to vote on that.
How many?
Three.
Three. How many would you have to have pass a rip G O bond for a new sewer plant in Union County?
However many people show up to vote.
Hundred and ninety thousand? You'd have to have half of them, maybe?
Yeah.
Hundred and ninety thousand votes versus three votes to make a three hundred million dollar decision? Sounds good to me. Don't, how many times did you have to go through that with, uh, school bonds?
They were always on the ballot.
So, so if we didn't have classroom seats and we did a G O bond on schools and it failed, wouldn't we be in a bind? What would we have to do? If the sheriff's jail bond failed, we still have to build a jail, right? But if we don't get a sewer plant, we don't have high-density development in one area of the county. But we still have sewer capacity, we're still building sewer. We're still sharing sewer with the City of Monroe. So we don't stop growing. We just don't spend three hundred million dollars to go in debt. So is a G O bond lower interest rates or higher interest rates than a revenue bond?
Um, they're normally lower because of our tripway credit rating.
Low, lower interest rates.
But it's not a lot.
Not a lot, but it's still lower.
It's still a little bit lower, yes.
Than having to borrow off three people voting for it. Okay, um, I'm in favor of the policy, I think is a good policy. I think it's a solid way to put the citizens of this county back in control of their, uh, public works department. And the monies would not be paid by the taxpayers, they would be paid by the ratepayers to the enterprise system, including water and sewer customers, which I'm a water customer only. Commissioner, Vice Chair Merrill, you're a water customer only. But if we voted for it and supported it, then, then we're, we have a say in it, one way or the other, like schools. So, uh, any other comments or discussion?
Um, I'll just say that I'm, I'm going to be in support, um, of the policy as well. And, um, and I'll just reiterate Commissioner Rushing's comments. This is the, the best way that I know of that we can put the decision of growth and these, um, these projects in the hands of the people. So I'll be in support.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Hey, did we make a motion? Okay, let's redo that. I make a motion that we accept the policy, um, to, huh, at least I remember. All those, uh, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Rich, was that a note?
Yes.
Okay, two notes. Okay, um, next we have, uh, does anybody need a break? Can we keep, because there's some people here, I know, have been waiting a long time. Can we keep going?
Yeah, we, we can keep going.
Okay, uh, next is poultry mortality management discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Management Team. I'm here, uh, this evening to discuss briefly with you poultry mortality management here in Union County. Our objectives in poultry mortality management is the management of bird carcasses as generated through the poultry industry here in the county. Our presentation objectives here are to provide a historical context of poultry mortality management, to illustrate best practices as prescribed by the Department of Agriculture, describe current material handling practices by our solid waste transfer station and the farming community, and to illustrate challenges to the, uh, farming industry and our program as a result of recent sort of changes in the way poultry mortality has been managed. And at the end, we'll make a brief recommendation, uh, for maybe some program modifications. So N C D A gives guidance for how to handle poultry carcasses and the, uh, normal practice of doing poultry farming. There are two types of mortality. There's regular mortality, which is the normal turnover of poultry as they deceased and, and to get rid of those carcasses. And there's mass mortality, which be a, would be a result of pathogens such as bird flu. So we'll, we'll touch on both of those. Uh, the guidance is as such, uh, farms may bury that, uh, the poultry within twenty-four hours of, of the animal's death. You can landfill that material at a permitted lined M S W landfill. You can use rendering options, which is a process, uh, where you render valuable materials out of those carcasses, make, uh, protein, meal, and, and oils and greases, that kind of thing. Incineration is another option. Generally, that's done on farm. Composting also done on farm. And, uh, also, there's a disposal pit option that is a permitted on-farm solution as well. Again, I've touched on what is poultry rendering. It, uh, sounds kind of morbid, but it is making a usable product out of poultry carcasses. Up until very recently, many of our farms have utilized the rendering option. There was a local rendering facility in Wade's Borough who has recently changed the way they do business. And they no longer accept poultry as, as a feedstock for their process. So that left, uh, some of our farm, farmers, um, sort of on the hook for how do we now manage that material? This particular company placed boxes at individual farms for farmers to put those, uh, carcasses in. They serviced those, uh, boxes right at the farm. And they also spotted a tractor trailer at our transfer station where we take our M S W garbage. We, as a courtesy to the farmers, directed farmers who brought poultry to us to that trailer, that trailer was, uh, serviced daily. In fact, the farmers could only bring those, but those birds between eight o'clock and noon, Monday through Friday. And that gave the rendering company time to get those material, that material to the renderer on a daily basis. Uh, again, no longer does, do the farmers have that option. We've, we've kind of poked around to see if there are alternative rendering facilities in the, within reach, and there doesn't seem to be. So that said, um, this means that, uh, farmers don't have that option. They have increased biosecurity risk. And when I speak about biosecurity, it's how a farm protects itself against pathogens, specifically the, the bird flu types that could cause mass mortality and really impact the poultry industry, uh, throughout the community. And there, there's going to be additional cost implications to these farms because now, you know, they didn't have to pay before, when they brought those birds. I could speak to the landfill to our, to our solid waste facility. We just simply directed them to the trailer at no cost. And there's also potential mass mortality implications of this sort of trying to figure out what to do with these dead animals. Spoke about bird flu. That's the one everybody thinks about when they think about mass mortality and, and risk involved in the poultry industry. And what we're really trying to avoid is being a part or a facilitator of a mass mortality event at our facility specifically. So what are our challenges that we're seeing at the transfer station? Just want to put it in perspective, how many birds we're seeing? We only began tracking the tons of these animals, uh, the second week of January of this calendar year. And we're at a thousand and eighty-seven tons received. And it's my understanding that as the summer kind of gets here, we're going to see a spike in that mortality. I haven't lived through that yet, but we're, we're waiting to see how that plays out. But at current conservative tonnages, we're looking at, um, potentially two thousand six hundred tons annually of these birds. That's an equivalent of a hundred and thirty tractor trailers and a cost to our program, just our cost of eighty-five thousand dollars annually. So it's probably going to be more like a hundred thousand dollars when it's all said and done. More than the dollar impact to our program. It's really the potential biosecurity risk that we sort of exacerbate by allowing those animals to be tipped on our floor. Reason being, if you can imagine our transfer station tipping floor, it's a very wet environment. And if, if we did have, uh, Lord forbid, a, a situation where we had a avian flu infected animal hit that floor, you know, we've got over eighty thousand vehicles that run through our facility on an annual basis, which are mainly garbage trucks that then deploy from there to all corners of our county. So, you know, we potentially could be a hub for vectoring disease throughout the county. And so this is, I'm not the biosecurity expert. This is simply based on conversations I've had with, uh, folks at the Department of Agriculture and some of our local folks. Do we have someone, do we have any folks in here to speak to biosecurity?
Jeff, you're here.
Jeff, do you want to speak on this or?
And, and James Lee, you here?
Yes.
I couldn't, didn't recognize you with those glasses on. If you wouldn't mind coming up.
I've got Chad Larson, our lot operations manager, with me as well.
Again, and this is just to flesh out biosecurity risk. Again, I'm not the expert. Would you like to speak about?
Well, Jeff, you, you might want to say something about it and then, then let James kind of give an industry perspective.
Uh, yes, sir. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, and Commissioners and, uh, Management. Yeah, the concern that this came about, um, while all y'all were having the, the interest, you know, of dealing with COVID, we actually were dealing with a low-path avian influenza outbreak here in the county, of which I was, you know, very, I had a, I had to play a, a larger role than I had originally intended. And, uh, the concern that we had is when you, when, and while I, the, the production of these birds, we're talking about, you know, and for the most part, turkeys are the, are the highest, you know, likely to get sick with, with avian influenza. We'll just use that one as an example. Where we catch it, where it's found, uh, is in, you know, pre-marketing of the birds. And so where, you know, we ran into it this last, on this last time was birds were found to be positive right as they were going to market. Well, those farms had to be quarantined, they had to be depopulated, and those birds had to be, had to be kept on-site and composted. The concern we have is with the biosecurity aspect is, and I understand that, that the producers need a place to go. A forty-pound tom turkey is not an easy thing to deal with on farm. That is certainly a huge issue. And I think the hens are usually marketed around twenty, twenty pounds, give or take. And so versus a brawler, who's about eight pounds. So to give you, and a, and a lay-in bird is about four pounds, to give you the size range we're looking at here within the county. The concern is, once they're coming to one central location, uh, and, and that's fine if that's the, the choice of the board, but we want to make sure that biosecurity, uh, precautions are put in place so that while they may come in dirty from individual farms, we don't want them leaving from a central location and then spreading across the county and it going from, if it was in a bad situation, uh, disease outbreak, it going from one farm to another and it being a source of, from coming from Union County's transfer station. And so we, you know, Caleb and I talked about the potential, you know, you're looking at, even if you do a simple, like a wheel wash kind of, you know, scenario, that's going to put a lot of other implications on, on Caleb and his staff. And, and I think management, they've talked through all those. He can, he can, that's not my wheelhouse. But that's where all this came from. Like I said, I, I certainly understand, you know, the, the need for a place to go with those birds. But we just want y'all to be aware of the potential implications to, you know, the industry within the county.
James Allen Lee's here. And James is a poultry producer himself and worked for a large poultry producer here in the county. You know, what we're looking at is how do we pay for it? And we do charge right now for cows, any horses.
Sure, just our M S W rate of, you know, forty-four dollars a ton right now.
What do we take? Dogs, cats?
Everything.
Everything, so anything that somebody has, a pet or, or a, a farm animals, goats? But we charge for everything except for poultry?
Yeah, the difference being poultry is a daily, a daily dump where these other animals are went off.
Okay, um, but, but a cow could weigh as much as a pickup load of turkey, so, all right, sorry about that.
Well, I'd like to give just a little bit of context here, and they are correct with the rendering. You know, we were given notice in December, I believe, that the renderer was going to stop, um, servicing farms in January. There are other options for dealing with, uh, on-farm mortality. We, as a company, have built a, you know, grinder compost deal to do. We have encouraged our growers to apply for those. They are, there's a cost share, uh, program through F S A and U S D A to do that. That's a long process. That doesn't happen overnight to get those things done. You know, the options are basically burial. Now, you know Union County. I've lived here my whole life. I'm a farmer and a lawyer here. You know, that's what I do. Uh, I've seen the development side of it, I've seen the farming side of it. Development has grown tremendously. There are a lot more people here. There aren't a whole lot of places that are three hundred feet away from a stream and on a farm, you know, neighborhoods grow up right beside these farms. You think people want a pit dug there and buried? It's biodegradable. You know, this is going to go away. But we do need some method to get rid of those, those birds. The composting, I think, is one of the best options. As I said, as a company, we have done that for our company-owned farms. And we're encouraging our growers to move in that direction.
direction. But again, they didn't have, the best is a renderer, and what's happened to rendering is, and this is off-topic a bit, but there's been consolidation in the rendering business, and now the green energy subsidies have basically taken, make it more profitable for them to go make biodiesel through credits and tax credits and subsidies that they're receiving than to make animal food and pet food out of it, which is what typically they used our birds for. But again, and it's not just turkeys in Union County. AI, look, if anybody's concerned about AI and spreading AI to its producers, it is economically devastating to us, as they said, it cannot leave the farm once it's been seen there, they are composted on-site in the barns.
Compost inside?
Yes.
So there's a, that's like what you were saying, is they have to be composted on-site so they can't go?
And there's always a risk at some point in time, but this last outbreak that's been going on the last couple of years that you've been hearing in the news, and all is the high path AI, not the low path AI that we had some of before, is spread by wild birds and by buzzards. You know, so our fear is, we have people improperly burying birds on farms, and buzzards are getting, and they're going to pick it up and go somewhere else they're doing that, and that's the vector of spread. We, as an industry, we have been very, very, very keyed in on biosecurity, and we have eliminated most of this.
Wild animals could pick it up, and if they're eating animals out of the burial pit, pigs, coyotes, dogs.
You know, I called Anson County and asked them, I think they said their rate, when I called, they said their gate rate's $40 a ton, and that's what our growers down there have. We called and talked to a commissioner and, what was his name?
Jamie Caudle.
Yeah, Jamie Caudle, and he said they have come to an arrangement where they're doing $20 a ton for poultry with no extra tipping fee, it was just $20 a ton straight.
How many dollars a ton are we recommending, or you recommending?
Currently, we're not charging, but we will be recommending a discounted rate at $45 a ton, which is our first-tier MSW discount.
So, let me correct that, our recommendation is that we do not continue doing this, period. Now, understand that we do not continuing offering this, because first off, it was never our service to start with, we never offered this service. This was made available as a space for a company, and we inherited it because the company stopped providing that service. So we essentially inherited something that we weren't prepared to do, and we weren't, we didn't understand the costs associated with it. So our first recommendation is, we shouldn't be in this business. If you want to take this to a landfill, there's a landfill you can take it to, and they'll charge you for it, just like, just like we would charge, we're just a transfer station, we're not a landfill. So you can actually take it directly to Anson, drop it at Anson, they'll charge you whatever their charges are, or whatever opportunities you have to do it on-site, whatever those options are. Our first recommendation is, this is not a business that we should be in. If the board says this is a business we want you to continue to be in, and that's understandable, that the board certainly can give us that direction, we would recommend that fee to be $45 per ton.
And Brian, Caleb does have a few more slides, if we want him to finish the presentation, then we can have discussions about the recommendations.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for that insight. Also would like to say that because we've just continued to take these birds at no cost, we've inadvertently incentivized some farms to bring those birds to us and from other counties and other states. Like, we have identified a few trucks out of Pageland and some out of Anson County who apparently go right by a line MSW landfill to come to us because we don't charge, so that's just food for thought there. So again, as Manager Matthews stated, our recommendation is simply that perhaps we should not be taking these animals, if we choose to continue and accept the biosecurity risk, that we only accept those animals, much like when we had the rendering trailer during a certain window, between eight and noon, Monday through Friday only, so that we at least, at minimum, could get those birds to the line facility 20 miles away on a daily basis. That is our recommendation.
We are doing it on Saturdays now?
Currently, we're taking them all the time, like, just like garbage. Any questions from the Solace?
Any questions from the Commissioners? Is there, do you think there would be any money, Jeff or James, of maybe getting some help from the state to help offset some of these costs? You're getting help for these grinder stations, I guess?
We have growers that apply for them.
Right. If we started, if we charged the 45 per ton, because we do take cows, horses kind of bias not to take chickens and turkeys, if we're going to take other animals, because they all go in the same type of trailer, correct?
It's true. I think, from our position, it's really the biosecurity standpoint, just echoing the Department of Agriculture's guidance, that we'd prefer that Union County Transfer Station be taken out of the equation for a potential risk at being a hub to vector avian bird flu to all the farms. For example, I did visit a farm, just doing research, and they keep a million birds on-site all the time, and Lord forbid, we are a part of taking that operation down.
If we did, if we did this for a year at $45 a ton, that would give the growers time to get their grants or whatever, build their facilities, because you've got to either build something or find something, but it's not as easy, like you're saying, those grants take quite a while, right?
Yeah, they don't all get approved.
Yeah, and so, if we did this and see what it looks like for a year, to not jump and surprise farmers and say, oh, we're not taking them anymore, because I could see that being a big bind, and we have been taking them for, how long? Years?
Ever, yeah.
Forever?
Yeah.
That, I mean, I don't expect you to speak for all poultry growers, but what we're trying to find, I think we'd look for a good compromise here, and if Anson County, we can take it to Anson, we could take it to Anson County, if we've got people bringing it from South Carolina, then we could have that coming. What do you think, James?
Mr. Chairman?
Come on up.
I'm in favor of anything that lets us to keep doing that. Again, I disagree with their biosecurity argument, I think we're going to have a larger biosecurity problem, stopping this cold turkey pardon the ton, but doing that is going to give us a larger problem that we're going to have throughout the system. I personally think that we could get into some different things to look at, but yes, I understand it's been free, okay? That's because there is value to this product. I hope that there's a renderer that comes around, and there was in the news today, I don't know if you saw it, but Darling and Butterball are combining and building a new rendering plant up in the Goldsboro area in North Carolina, and I'm hoping some of those things come around, there's value to this product, but it's going to take time to work that out. I don't want to sit here and tell you that in one year, all of that can be done. But I do understand that there's a cost involved to the county, and that some of that does need to be probably passed along, we would just want it to be as minimal as it can be, cover those costs. I would also add that poultry is major industry in Union County, has been for a long time, there are a lot of our taxpayers here, a lot of, you know, I see those checks we write for our property taxes every year, and we're just one little part of it, okay? It is major business here, it is an industry that's been here for a long, Union County used to be the poultry capital of the world, you know, so it is big business here, and we would ask for y'all to support and help us out in the way you can, and we, I can't speak for other integrators here, but on our part, if we can just have it as little as possible, we understand we'll have to pay our way.
Well, I think what's clear from the stoic, Jeff?
Yeah, just a couple more pieces of information for you. So within the NRCS grants that everybody's referring to, that there, you're looking at one or two a year that they can fund, they just, they don't have the money there. So I mean, yes, encouraging additional funding from the state through that process would really help producers get more of these composters on-site, and the composters do a phenomenal job, because it's kind of a grinder-composter model, and they've, we've worked, when I was with the Department of Ag, we worked with the company developing those, and they do a very good job, they were developed in the hog industry, and so when you figure a 350, 500-pound animal versus a 40-pound animal, it really does do a good job in that regard. I also did speak with Dr. Martin, Mike Martin's the state vet, I spoke with him this morning about the Darling Industries, and he, because I know him and the Commissioner had been working with the rendering, trying to find additional ways across the state, so that this is not such a big hit, and he did say that they were, had committed to millions of dollars in upgrades to several plants, including their transport, which is a whole other conversation, but they are committed to that, so that may be something that comes back as an option. You know, the different integrators may have to have individual contracts with them, you know, to offer that service to their growers, but it is something that may be a possibility.
So everybody's working on something, right?
Everybody's trying to do this together, yeah.
Okay.
So, quick question, Jeff, maybe you can answer this, or maybe some of the folks around in the audience, that grinding equipment, how much is the initial investment for a piece of equipment like that?
We just, we just built a large grinding unit for our own company farms, and it's about $350,000. Now, that's larger hours.
For a farmer-sized one, you're looking probably about $100,000 to $120,000 for one farm. Ours is a little bit larger scale, so kind of the scale we built it for a larger farm and that was about $300,000. And then, you know, I think if you guys do start charging, and I would love it, to see maybe if you guys matched Anson County at $20 a ton, some of that tonnage would go to Anson County already that you're seeing now, which would help, because Anson County just started doing that, and they commented, well, we don't see much of it, and so, well, because Union County isn't charging, so it would be nice if that would help our growers out a lot, because their costs have increased, and we've tried to give them a little bit of a raise, but if they got to start paying 45 bucks a ton for that mortality management, then they're going to, see that way, go, that raise that we just gave, go away pretty soon.
Sure, sure. I would like to just add that from our facility to the Anson County landfill is 20 miles, so, you know, our hope is that we would encourage folks to go to the line MSW facility directly. We're not afraid of the work, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to continue to load map.
And Caleb, can you talk a little bit about our transport contract and that?
So, our current cost, this is, again, we're going to bid our T and D contract, our transportation and disposal, because we have to take our material as well, to Anson County landfill currently is $30.88 per ton, so if you add our staff's handling and fuel on that, 200-plus trucks a year, you know, you could easily throw $2 on Anson, let's say $32.88 per ton is our cost, so without trying to make it down.
And that contract is up this coming year, so we will have to renegotiate that, so we're a little concerned with making the rate too low to when the contract is renegotiated that will be running at a loss at that point.
Okay. Does anybody else have a, before we go too much more deeper in how the sausage is made, nobody wants to hear, anybody got a question about this?
Well, I do, we'd be making sausage.
Okay. We got a dilemma, we got a dilemma that we have something that needs to be done in the media, we have options coming up to be discussed for the next year in the state with the state agriculture folks. If I pay $45 a ton throwing a cow, right, per ton?
Well, it'll actually be 47. Our normal rate for MSW at current budget recommendation would be 47, probably, but we're thinking of $2 discount.
47 per ton?
That would be, that would be the new tonnage that anyone would pay for disposal based on current budget.
Okay.
45 if you were to make, follow our request if you do require us to continue.
And a cow or a horse could be half a ton or a ton, depending on how big.
I really want to.
What are some thoughts here from the other Commissioners? Unless you have thought, well?
Well, I was, you said we were also open on Saturdays, and I remember when we were working with staff, part of the problem was, were these carcages, carcages, sitting around for a few days before our employees could get to it, and then it was very difficult to...
Our employees won't touch them after that. Yeah, they bring them in a bucket or a truck and they throw them off, and so they don't have to, our employees don't have to touch them.
So they bring them in, can a duck truck, and we load them with a loader, so we do not touch them, but they do sit on a trailer until the Monday rolls.
That's the part we discussed as staff, you may have not been there that day, and I remember that being a challenge. So I didn't know if actually charging a fee might, would help send some of that to Anson, if they're open on Saturdays, if, you know, if we could revisit the days that we are or are not open for these drop-offs. But I think it's obvious to everyone that we can't continue being in this business for free.
And I think if it's the board's desire to continue this for a period of time, we can do that for a short period of time and come back to you with the impact that we've seen. We would recommend not taking them on Saturdays, I think we can continue taking them Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and we would recommend that $45 fee, which is a discounted rate from what the normal MSW providers.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
So if the board does want to do that, I'd recommend we come back January 1, that'll give us a full year of collection, and we can have a follow-up discussion at that time.
July 1 or June.
January 1.
A full year of data.
Yes.
It would be Monday through Friday.
Sorry, yes.
Through the week, we would quickly set that material up.
I was good with Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
I would emphasize that it would be best practice to have a half-day, front-half-day window. That way, we're sure to load those birds out and get them to Anson County in the same day. This would be identical to the rendering option we used to provide.
You would probably see some of your, you'd probably see some of your eastern Union County farmers go to Anson County directly, the other areas of the county, they would go, but there is a problem with leaving them out all weekend, so the farmer collects them, puts them on the back of a truck, and they lay there, and as a kid who grew up on a poultry farm, turkeys are heavy.
They're not going to be good come Sunday and Monday.
They're not going to be good come Sunday or Monday to take off the truck and dump in. Now, you can do it on a Saturday, and it's not a problem because it's in the dumpster already, but if you're trying to peel a turkey off a truck, and it's summertime, 100 degrees, 90 degrees outside, James, you've been there. It ain't pleasant for no, what?
I said, farmers work seven days a week.
Yeah, farmer work seven days a week, so that's the only reason, Saturday would be important, if we're open Saturday for other stuff.
And Caleb, in that situation, they'd still have the opportunity to go to Anson on the weekend, right? The Anson landfill is open, so they, even if our facility wasn't, they could transport to Anson at that point.
Again, I think that would be a good solution for us, to, that if we are going to continue doing this as a service to our farmers, to our poultry farmers, from what I've heard, I think eliminating at least the Saturday might, would encourage people to look at other alternatives.
To, just to clarify, and obviously, we're going to follow the direction of the board and whatever that is, that if the board intends for us to continue this service, our recommendation would be that we do this Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to noon. This is, that was the previous way that we actually allowed the birds to be dropped off, that gives us a half-day to do the turnaround, we would not offer that service on Saturdays, they could certainly go to Anson if they needed to, and we would have a tonnage recommended of $45 per ton. And we could bring back, you know, data from there, and the board could give us further direction after that. That would be the staff's current recommendation if you want us to continue with that program.
And I would support, if you'd like to make the motion, I'd support that, but I would ask that you include in that motion that you guys come back to us in August and let us know how that's working on Monday.
Do we say August or January?
August, August. No, no, I'm talking about, let us know if it's a, if we go through the summer, if we go through the summer and it's horrible, and it stinks worse, you've got people coming through their garbage off and it smells worse than it would, because we're not open on Sunday, but we are open on Monday, and if it's, if we're not collecting or something's sitting there, we're hauling it away on Saturday or not?
No, that's the thing.
So from Friday to Monday, we wouldn't haul anything away?
No, the goal would be to have it hauled on Friday, that's why we're, we would have the disposal by noon, then we could do the haul away on Friday, it would not sit on Saturday.
So the only option then would be Anson?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you... But yeah, if we could come back and maybe look at that at a later meeting, just see, without talking about sausage. It's, it's bad. It can be bad. And, and unpleasant for the farmers and the people working at the place. And, so, yeah, if we could come back and maybe just see how it's going. Okay? Would you like to make the motion on that?
Hmm, sure. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Union County Division of Solid Waste to begin charging a fee, $45 per ton, to accept poultry mortality at the municipal solid waste transfer station, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to noon.
Yes, ma'am.
And that we would revisit this conversation in January to see how the program is working and give our farmers time to look at alternatives and not go cold turkey.
He couldn't resist. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Now, I didn't think that one would take so long. Let's do this, let's take a five-minute recess, give everybody that needs to go to the restroom a chance to go. Let's be back in our seats at 5:00 after. Now, oof. Anybody know where Jason is? Bjorn up here. You'd like to come up and talk real fast and?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Manager Matthews. I am presenting a topic that was presented at a quarterly CARPO members' meeting in March, where we heard from the Village of Marvin, their experience with initiating a street lighting program. And they presented their lessons learned, and, and we actually were pretty amazed at how easy it was, once they, once they broke it down. Background is, NCDOT does not install lighting on road improvement projects. If you're on the interstates, sure, but SR routes, NC routes, US routes, they do not. We're growing. We have a lot of unsafe intersections in rural, at least dark, road situations, probably the most terrified I've been driving here in Union County at night. Was in Weddington, going along Forest Lawn, Potter, that area. Couldn't believe how dark it was and how much activity there still was, although it was dark. Approximately half our municipalities are already spending money to illuminate intersections. And illuminating them increases safety. The FHWA has studies that show 21% reduction in nighttime crashes. And bottom line is that costs about $1,000 per year per location to illuminate an intersection. And we have multiple utilities here in Union County, and that's an average, some are a little bit higher, some are a little lower, but rule of thumb is about $1,000 per year. So what we did, NCDOT was very helpful. Their traffic safety unit created a database, geographic database for our entire county of all intersections, 10-year crash histories, including nighttime crashes. So any intersection of NC routes in the county, I can tell you how many crashes there were over the past 10 years and how many occurred at night. So we filtered intersections from throughout Union County, looking at locations with more than 40% of the crashes occurring at night, with 10 or more crashes, and were unincorporated. And we found 10 intersections that met that criteria. And then we looked at the crash reduction factors to look at the number of crashes over that period and how many you could expect to reduce with lighting, and came up with a range of $3,500 to $10,000, which is pretty favorable compared to other treatments for reducing a crash. And here's just an example, they're in general order, it's in your slideshow, but this example, all 10 crashes were at night. None of these intersections are funded for any other kind of improvements. It's not in our critical, critical intersection program. To give you an example, it would cost $5,000 to reduce one crash at this location. And there's other locations throughout the county. I've listed the utility company, total number of crashes, the percent, and there is a good geographic spread. Now, we have a second group of intersections that I want to talk about, which are roundabouts. We have received numerous calls, both through our, and through our critical intersection program, people commenting on roundabouts being kind of difficult to navigate at night. You're going at a, at a good clip and then you're coming up on this. Yes, there's notification, there's signage, but it's still often a surprise. So, NCDOT says, yeah, we would like to illuminate roundabouts as well, but we only have so much money. And so, if we were to propose something like this, they would, they would be receptive. And we don't have crash history at these locations, 10-year numbers, because most of them are less than 10 years old. And they're effectively a separate group of projects. And the number of roundabouts in unincorporated Union County are going to go up. So, we have seven that are located in unincorporated Union County. I'll note that there's a couple that have a, a little pie sliver that are in a municipality, but they're generally all unincorporated. And how this would occur, if you chose to fund such a program, is that first, we get some direction for you. Then, we coordinate with the munis, or I'm sorry, with the power companies to conduct an illumination study. It's done by them. They determine the number of lights or poles. That $1,000 number was a worst-case scenario, put one on all four corners, and that comes up $1,000. Encroachment permit through the NCDOT. Power company goes and installs it, and I spoke with PD Electric for one of them in particular, and they said, yeah, that we could have this up in a couple of weeks. And then, we get the bill, and then we pay the bill. So, I'm trying to be as, as brief as possible. I'll go back to any previous slide. This is something that's new within the county. It's not new for the municipalities, but we, the traveling public doesn't care whether they're in a municipality or in the unincorporated county. And this is a low-cost program to address safety.
Any commissioners have a question?
We are number seven in the county, in the state, on a per-crash, per-mile traveled basis, so it is an important issue.
Richard, answer.
Let me ask you this, how many were?
I didn't poll that, I'm sorry. So I could, I could go get the information, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
I, I would just say, real quick, Bjorn, thank you very much for pulling that information together and for the presentation. You know, I think this is a result of a few different conversations, you know, and, and sharing of information that we've had with some of our municipalities, and I think it's been very helpful to at least look at this. So certainly appreciate you bringing this forward.
Yes, sir.
And the action for tonight?
No actions, just information. I think one of the things that we want the board to be aware, it was not programmed in this year's budget request, but it is always something that we can revisit either mid-year or for next year's budget cycle, if you want us to reconsider that. But it's currently not in budget.
How, I know you said that there were seven roundabouts in certain areas. How many intersections? I, I didn't catch the number of intersections in rural, rural areas that you went through real quickly.
There were 10.
10.
10 intersections, seven that are roundabouts.
Okay. Thank you.
And how much was the cost per intersection?
$1,000 per year.
So $10,000 per year?
Plus the seven for the roundabouts, if you wanted to do that.
So 17,000 per year.
Yes, sir.
That would cover electric?
That, that would be, that would be the total cost to the county on an annual basis. But honestly, we're just looking for guidance in terms of, like, should we, could we consider fatalities? Should we consider the, the traffic volumes on those roads? We'll look at the feedback.
I'm very interested in this. You know, even, even to see, you know, if we come up with some money after the budget process.
If the board wants to direct me to try and find something for this budget, obviously, that's part of the discussion here, that if you want to direct us to figure out, can we do this in this budget cycle? How would we do this? We certainly can make that suggestion. You could say, no, we'd like to wait and see after the budget's adopted and how things are going. Is there another opportunity? And we revisit it in a few months? We can do that as well, or we can wait till next fiscal year and you can discuss it. So that, that is part of the discussion here.
I'd hate to have, I'd hate to lose somebody at an intersection, whether it's, and I'm sure there probably are some fatalities, less on the roundabouts because they're, they're meant to not have fatalities.
Yes, sir.
Can you think of any fatalities we've had at a roundabout?
I, I can't say yes or no off the top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would like to see if we can, if we could do that. So, you know, the direction would be to, to let's see how fast we could do this, whether it's this year, or next year, or September, or whenever we could do it or move it forward. And you're saying the power companies could get it all done fast?
We're talking within months. Honestly, it's the, it's the easements with property owners, if, if that is an issue. And Marvin, their planner who went through this program, they've, they've put up a couple dozen light poles, and they were, they had a pretty good experience with the property owners to get the easements for installation if necessary.
And, Ryan, would you like to?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll say this too, that I'm in agreement that $17,000 is, is not a lot of money to spend on safety. This is sort of, sort of low-hanging fruit, in my opinion, and it's one that can make a big impact on our roads. So, I would be supportive of a motion, you know, to try to find some, some extra dollars there. Even if we couldn't fund everything, you know, at this point in the process, maybe we pick, you know, some of our worst offenders, and we try to find a couple of thousand dollars or $5,000 or $10,000, you know, whatever it is we can do. And then, then we, we can always revisit those other intersections at a later time.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, sure. All right. So yeah, I would make the motion that, that we direct staff to see how many of these intersections that we could fund lighting for, and then come back to us perhaps in our next meeting or, yeah, okay, in our next meeting with that information for a vote.
And discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Got it? Yes. Okay. Next, we have board discussion on Chamber Commerce Resolution. And?
Let me put that map up for you.
Right. And do we have a copy of the resolution here?
I know this isn't the easiest to see, because it is, of course, the entire county.
Just that way.
See if I can zoom in in the way here. That, that might actually be a little bit better to see.
Okay. We've received a resolution from the Chamber of Commerce, and I think it was said that it was also sent to the state legislature. And the, there were some concerns that I had with it. I responded back with a letter, and I think all of you were copied with that letter. The, the concerns that I had is that some of the statements in here are not accurate to the work that we've been doing. You know, the first whereas is whereas Union County Chamber serves as the voice for business in Union County. And, well, they, they serve the voice for their membership. And then, whereas the Union County Chamber Board of Directors has adopted a legislative agenda at the recom, recommendation of the Chamber's Public Policy Committee, which we, we agree with a lot of what they said in their agenda. I don't know that there's very much that we agreed, disagreed with in their policy agenda. That policy agenda, including getting more money going toward commercial, industrial-type avenues and getting our commercial to residential tax base moving in the right direction, which we've been trying to do for at least two decades, and, and it always goes in the other direction. The legislative agenda identifies three guiding principles. One of those guiding principles is that the Chamber supports programs and initiatives that provide adequate, effective public and private infrastructure essential for business development and growth and prosperity throughout Union County. We agree with that, too. We want schools, we want roads, we want all the infrastructures that's required for growth. We want to be able to educate our kids. We support SBCC and their mission to do that. Whereas the Chamber has adopted a specific legislative agenda item stating that the Chamber supports efforts at the state, county, and municipal levels to implement planning and funding mechanisms for increasing wastewater treatment capacity and to immediately begin the process of adding wastewater capacity while implementing a method of allocation that prioritizes industrial and commercial development. Well, we're doing that. We've been doing that. We just heard from our people that came in and, and advised us over three different meetings of that, and we have And we have heard from our rating agencies, we've heard from StanTech, we've heard from a lot of different people about this, and there's no disagreement in any of that. We are implementing and planning funding mechanisms for increasing wastewater capacity in Union County. We're implementing capacity, we've done a school bond, we've built a new school, we're going to be building a new school at Forest Hills. We're going to be moving east Union. We've completed an east elementary. So, we're moving in that direction for all infrastructure, not just wastewater. Whereas Union County does not currently have additional wastewater capacity to support new commercial and industrial development. Well, we do. We mentioned that with Indian Trail here tonight. We're upfitting the pipes in order to get it from the existing sewer plants to the new construction for commercial. And we've put 15, 16 million dollars, we'll be putting into that by the time that that's upfitted. We're expanding the 12 Mile Creek Sewer Plant. And we're, along with that, we're doing a allocation policy. We'll be talking about that. I think all the commissioners up here have supported an allocation policy in the past in order to do that. We have to be able to allocate so that one town doesn't gobble up all the sewer capacity on paper, which is what we have now, is it's just all on paper. We still, we're only using 5 to 6 million gallons a day on a plant that's capacity at 7.5 million gallons. But on paper, we've wrote a lot of checks. And if those checks come in, we have to cash them. Some of those checks will never come back. Some of those businesses won't go, some of those residential properties won't go, but we have capacity now. Whereas Union County is not currently, oh, let's see. I got that. Whereas Union County has experienced similar wastewater capacity shortages in the recent past, which have limited growth and development at that time. We had an issue where we had 105% or 103% on a plant because of the rain, not because of over-construction. And it wasn't that the plant was overflowing, the plant was fine. It was the on-paper, that if we had everybody that was on paper in the system, then we would have been 105%. The plant takes more than that. It's a 7.5 million gallon plant, but how many gallons a day can it actually treat, Mr. Manager?
I believe it's roughly 12 million gallons it can accommodate.
So, 12 million gallons it can accommodate, and it's only, it's less than half that, or right at half that now. So, it can clean the waste. Then we have the, after a discussion with numerous interest groups, including Union County officials, no plan has been offered to expand wastewater capacity to alleviate in either the short or long term the current wastewater crisis faced by businesses and industry in the county. So, if everybody would take a look real quick at the map that's up here behind us, you see that a third, less than a third of the county, if you leave out Monroe, maybe a third if you add Monroe, has sewage capacity. The other areas, there's no sewer capacity. People really don't want it there. They don't care. They don't need it there. They don't want the high-density development that goes along with it. But if we had some allocation policy in place, and we had lines near those places, you know, we could have some development there. We could have some commercial development. People don't want the residential development. Even in the areas where we have capacity, people are just tired. They get elected, their leaders get elected, saying that they're going to manage growth, and then things change, plans change. So, in Waxall, which is currently friendly to high-density residential growth, and some of the other towns which are more friendly, we just had a member of Indian Trails folks here tonight, they understand the issue. The issue is, is commercial pays better than the residential. You don't have kids going to school out of a commercial building. So, when we're looking at this, and we're saying, "Well, where do we have sewer?" We have sewer available at Crooked, Lower Crooked Creek. We have sewer available in Waxall to continue building houses. On paper, our planning has to be, we have to get the paper stuff either has to drop off, which we have a five-year use it or lose it, or in a couple of years, we can expand the 12 Mile Creek Sewer Plant. Has the design and planning already been completed for that plant?
We are very close to finished in design.
So, we're moving right along, and we're getting that finished. The people in Weddington and the people in Marvin have sewer capacity. They have 1.5 million gallons between them that they can build something on right now. The issue is, they'll never build 1.5 million gallons worth of anything because they don't have enough space to do all that. They don't, the people there don't want it. They want R40. They don't want apartments there, they don't want any other thing that are high-density there. That's been traditional. Past elected officials in the state legislature have had to de-annex properties in that area in order to get commercial growth. So, they've got a solution in Marvin for their issue they keep coming to us about, is a pump station. Well, we talked about a pump station tonight. They're wanting to add one. We took one and refurbished it and got a new one there, and it takes it and pushes it in a different direction. It doesn't add a pump station to the system, which has to be managed, has to have electrical service, has to have inspections, all that stuff. So, Marvin can do what they want to do with the sewage capacity they have, and their solution is a gravity solution, which they just don't want because it would cost the developer more money. Now, every member on this board and every member on the last board, at some point in time, has voted not to provide that pump station that goes to a gravity solution. And yet, they don't want to believe that. They want to believe we're picking on them or not. Their sewage is some of the most expensive sewage treatment in the county. It's treated by Mecklenburg County, which does not give us a break. Not like sitting dead chickens in Hanson County. They don't give us a break. So, Weddington, Marvin has sewage capacity. Waxall has a lot of sewer capacity that can be built on. They just don't have sewage capacity to go annex properties and give rezonings. And they can still rezone, but they just can't build the project until the 12 Mile Creek's upgraded, which is coming along as we speak. The people that were in line are coming on, they get approved. Our sewage capacity is more efficient than we thought it would be, and it's, the 12-month average is working out fine, everything's good there. The towns of Styllings and the town of Indian Trail, they have a solution coming, upsizing of the pipes to go to a sewer plant that's existing there. The city of Monroe has their own. You don't have to worry about Monroe. Monroe serves Wingate through Union County, and Monroe serves Marshville through Union County. Marshville, we've got a plan there, too. They have entered into an agreement with Hanson County, because Hanson County has up to 6 million gallons of waste treatable there. They have nowhere near that. They don't even know if they have a million, million and a half that they're using of that. There's a plan there. They're going to go to Hanson County with 300,000 gallons, and they're going to, they've worked a deal out with Hanson County, they're using ARPA money to do it. God bless them. They're going to have sewage for their projects. So, right now, there's not a crisis in Union County over water and sewer. The Union County Chamber Board Directors and Union County's lack of wastewater capacity has become a crisis for the business development. Well, we talked to them several times. We've had meetings with them, with the manager and the vice chair, myself. We've gone to them when they've asked us, and we've told them. They may not like the plan, but that does not mean there's not a plan. And when they don't like the idea that we're going to put a general obligation bond to let all of you vote whether we need to spend $300 million on a new sewer plant in one section of the county, which is going to require massive high-density development, which a lot of people don't like the roads being overcrowded, they don't like schools being overcrowded, they don't like those things. So, planning it out a little bit and figuring out what we're going to do. Looking at new technologies like we've heard about in our meetings with our consultants. So, therefore, it be resolved that by the Union County Chamber Board of Directors that Union County's lack of water and wastewater capacity become, became a crisis for business development. Vice Chair Merrill, how many minutes did you spend on the phone with the president of the chamber before they sent out this resolution?
So, I did receive a call from Pat Cale at the Chamber of Commerce before she sent this over to us, giving me a heads-up that this resolution was about to be sent. And I spent about 45 minutes on the phone with her, because we had just completed our third meeting with Brown and Caldwell in receiving information on water and sewer. And I told her that my biggest concern was that they felt like there was a crisis and we had no plan. And I explained to her that we do have a plan, but we had just completed the third and final presentation from the water and sewer consultant, and that we had not had a work session to take that information and update the master plan. And so, I asked her if she, if the chamber and her board would just pause on this resolution so that I could get her all of the information from Brown and Caldwell and share that with her before, you know, sending this resolution. So, after 45 minutes, she thanked me and said that she would like to see the information from Brown and Caldwell, but she was already sending the email and that the General Assembly had already received it before the call. And as soon as I heard about the General Assembly, I explained again to Mrs. Cale that when you and I met with the chamber a couple of months ago, that our priority is commercial-industrial. We are in agreement. And that that's why we decided to use 16 million of the ARPA fund to do that extension along Highway 74 in the hopes that it would bring more commercial-industrial, you know, with us being in an imbalance of 90-10 residential. And I told her, you know, we do have a plan, we've been working on this, you know, please let me get you this information so you can see what we just received, and so that I could show her that we do indeed have a plan. But after 45 minutes, she was under the impression that she had been told Union County has no capacity and that we were at 94% capacity. So, unfortunately, after we hung up, you know, our legislators had already received it. Then we received it. And then, after I met with Jason Kay and Brian Matthews to figure out, you know, the 94%, she was looking at one of our facilities, not the total. But 45 minutes, I urged her to let me get her more information.
And when we, you know, do the rest of the board, y'all remember when we were at 95%? That was a few years ago, a couple of years ago. That was a news story in WBT. And I guess the reporter was wondering why I wasn't so concerned about it, it's because we've been here before. We were at 400% in 2006. Not 90, not 100, 400% because it was paper capacity. Every developer that walked in the door was told by staff at the time, "Sure, we got sewer. You can have it. Does your brother want sewer? Tell him to come in here, too." So, I've seen this before, and I've talked to the Division of Water Quality and Environmental Quality. I've talked to them within the last six months that we've been in office doing this. And they said, "We don't want you to do what some people are wanting you to do, which is bypass, bypass the basin and take your pump station diversion line at the sewer plant and push it to Mecklenburg County so that we can just start putting in high-residential subdivision in." They don't care about commercial. They don't care. So, when we did that, when they had that conversation, the guy said, "Do not plan to fail." Now, for 12 and a half years, I've sat in closed sessions, open sessions, work sessions, every kind of information-gathering thing that a county commissioner can do. I didn't see the president of the chamber at all those meetings. She wasn't in those closed sessions. You know, the Chamber of Commerce had no problem when we raised taxes on small business and large businesses in Union County. Chamber of Commerce had no problem as long as we were raising rates. They had no problems. But now, somehow, they start having these problems and issues. Now, I don't know if somebody's telling them something on the side, like, for example, a mayor who's lived here for about five years versus a county commissioner who's served for 12 and a half years versus the vice chair, who was the chair of the school board with a $455 million budget with 53 schools that had to pay utility bills, which every time the rate goes up, we have to take money out of the classroom and put it in the sewage. It costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to have rate increases on 53 schools. It's very expensive. It's not cheap. And that money comes out of the money that we give them. We have a guy who has worked in dealing with water and sewer pipes for 25 years. He's an instructor in their program with one of the nation's largest company that makes this stuff. But we get insulted at a Marvin meeting saying that they don't know what they're doing, and I must not know what I'm doing. Yet, we campaigned on it for a year, we got elected on it, and now we're implementing the stuff that we said that we were going to do. And we're doing it legally, we're doing it by paying for it and taking care of it. But again, the chamber leaned on their expertise in water and sewer, not what we have. Every commissioner up here has voted on a lot of these issues. Not all of them, we don't all agree, never will. However, the voters have voted for every commissioner up here because we were going to help do the allocation stuff, that we were going to help keep these rates low as possible, help keep taxes as low as possible. We've all campaigned on it, and we all got elected, all five of us. And just because they don't agree with it, and I don't know what the chamber's been told, but alls I know is that I don't want to be a part of an organization that sends out something like this and talks to me. I've been talked to, I've gone to talk to the chamber at many events, I've explained this to them, till I'm blue in the face. And yet, they don't like it, so they send a letter to the, or send a resolution to the legislature, who, again, the legislators are listening to us. They understand that we have issues that we need to work through, and that we're the ones that have been working through it for many years, and it's our position. They got their lane, we got our lane, towns have their lane. So, I would make the motion that we, how much did we spend last year? $13,000 with Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, sir. I believe our dues are approximately $5,000 annually, and then with the other events and the other items that we pay for, it's roughly around $13,000.
Well, I would say that that $13,000 would be better spent somewhere else. And I would make the motion that we drop our membership in the Union County Chamber of Commerce. Anybody have a discussion on the motion?
I don't have a discussion on the motion, but I do have a couple of comments. I believe it was around February, we presented our legislative agenda to our senators and our representatives in Raleigh for Union County, requesting them in our legislative agenda to give Union County permission to prioritize commercial and industrial projects ahead of residential. And I haven't heard back if they're going to be able to do that for us since we're 90-10, to give us an opportunity to increase our commercial, industrial, retail projects. But we... Um, but we, we, we requested that at the beginning of the year and hopefully that's still on the table and being discussed, um, with our, uh, General Assembly. The, the other thing that really, um, confuses me in this resolution is the demand for immediate attention. Um, we, we have sat here for almost six months, working with staff, taking recommendations from staff, um, whether it's a one point five percent increase, a one point seven-five percent increase, um, a Crooked Creek extension, um, R and R, um, issues at Twelve Mile. And, and we, we have already voted and approved to give the county manager permission and staff permission to move forward with those before we even had all the information. Um, we had already in- indicated to staff that we wanted to move forward on those projects. Um, I would like that, to ask the manager or someone to properly explain the one facility that on paper is at ninety-four percent because we had an extensive conversation the day after my phone call and on what is actual and, um, what has been permitted, if you can speak to that ninety-four percent, because that seems to be the basis of a lot of confusion.
Yes, ma'am. So currently, the way we track, um, that information that we present to the board is we provide you with the actual flows and so that's, that's how much is flowing through the plant, you know, in any given month. And it does change, that fluctuates as we add and, and, and the flows change. We also then have a, a category or an item which shows you how much we have also permitted plus the actual flows. So that's projects that have a permit, but they're not flowing capacity, they're not sending it to the plant. Um, and that gives you what the total number is that we are required to basically hold from the plant. And, um, that's where the ninety-four point four percent come from. That is adding the permitted projects to the actual projects. Now, I want to clarify that, um, those projects take years to actually come to fruition. Um, and we do have a clawback provision within our developers' agreement that if they don't use that within a certain period of time, we can clawback that flow. Obviously, uh, we have not had to do that at this point in time, but that is an option. The, the, I think the Chamber and, and some individuals look at that in that if we're permitted to ninety-four point four percent, which that is accurate, then that means that there's only four, I'm sorry, only five point six percent of capacity that is available to be, um, permitted for other projects. And that's accurate. That actually is accurate because that's, we cannot permit a plant above one hundred percent. Uh, the, the challenge is, is that the number of the, the percentage fluctuates. And I, I think if the board will look back to the past, we were as high as ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. The reason that number has changed is because projects that have gone from planned and permitted now go to flow, they're actually flowing. It's often those numbers change. They, they permit it often at a higher number than the actual flows are going to be, so we realize some benefit from that. Also, our actual flows fluctuate. If we have very low rain, um, for several months, then we usually have low flows. If we have a lot of rain, it can be a lot higher. So we realize some changes and some additions to that flow. So it, it's not the sky is falling, but it is certainly a limitation. And I think that, uh, that, that what we hear, the biggest complaint from the development community is that they're afraid of submitting their projects to go through the review process because they don't want to spend the money, time and effort to then get a no if we get to a point where we are at a hundred percent. Um, that is always a possibility. We currently have projects that are running through the process. Um, I believe that number right now was presented at, um, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand gallons. Uh, that's a combination. That is some projects that are in full engineering review. Uh, I think that was about twenty, two hundred and sixty thousand gallons. Uh, and then you had a, a number that was around six hundred and some thousand gallons that were in sketch plan review. All of those projects will not come to, to fruition. They won't. But they are in some stage of process. And what we always tell every developer, so I tell everyone that comes in, that there's no, there's no line. There, you don't get a number. It's as fast as you can move through the process. If you have good engineers and you can move quickly, you can get through the process quickly. If you're a little slow, you might get where you don't get any capacity. Uh, and that's the best I can tell anyone who makes a submission. I understand their concern. Uh, we cannot guarantee capacity and will not guarantee capacity until they reach that point, but we do have capacity. We are continuing to permit projects and as the board approves, or if you approve the expansion, we will continue to operate that process and allow projects to move forward as we can.
Thank you for that background information. Um, for, for, um, Twelve Mile Creek that is permitted at ninety-four percent, um, can you tell me what the actual is?
I can.
I don't have it in front of me. I hope you did.
Yeah, I can. It's right here in the Chamber. This comes from the Chamber of Commerce's website. Actual use, actual average daily flow at Twelve Mile Creek is five point four-nine million gallons per day. It's a seven point five million gallons plant. There's two million gallons out there of capacity. And from two thousand and six and seven until today, the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant was at two and a half, three million gallons of use then. Now it's at five point five million gallons over twenty years.
Okay. So we don't have a percentage to compare apples to apples?
Uh, yeah. The percentage is, uh, well, it's a five point eighty percent.
Hold on, I can tell you what it is. It was included in the packet. Unfortunately, I don't have the handout.
And I don't have it in front of me?
But I, I can calculate it for you. If you can give me that number, Officer Chairman, if you can, I will calculate that number.
And while you're calculating that, um, Lee's not here, is he?
That was five point seven.
So when the county.
What was that number again?
Five point four-nine.
Five point four-nine.
Had a seven point five. So while we're, while the county stopped permitting and, and rezoning projects in the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Basin, the city of Waxall kept doing it and had meeting after meeting where they voted on these projects. And then it comes, oh, we don't have sewer for commercial projects. Well, no duh. Use it up on all residential. Oh, well, we had to. It's against the law not to do that. No, it's not against the law. You wouldn't vote on it. That's stupid to say that you couldn't do what the county did and stop rezoning high-density residential projects to allow for some cushion here. And then that number went down and they kept rezoning and kept rezoning. Um, Wesley Chapel didn't. Monroe Springs didn't do it. Weddington didn't do it. Neither did Marvin. They got one project that they want to do, as a commercial and a residential, and they've got a capacity to do it. They just don't want to do it so they want to save the developer money. You were saying that the developers, they don't want to come in and stick their neck out and get in line to get this sewer, but yet the voters of Union County and the ratepayers of Union County, nobody cares about our neck. At what point do we say, "Look, we're not going to lay out money that might not ever come back to us and we're not going to build a new sewer plant in the Rocky River Sub Basin and help Monroe upfit their new plant and then we're going to go down to Waxall and do the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Plant?" We can't do it all. It's ridiculous to think we could. And we could if we wanted to raise our rates to the roof, but that's not what we campaigned on and that's not what I'm going to vote for. And like the mayor Marvin said, Stony's not going to convert on this. I'm not. And I don't think this whole board should do it. I think that we got elected saying what we were going to do, putting a clear plan out there, and we're following the plan. So if the Chamber wants to, I don't know of any other organization that we're part of that campaigns against us. Not the, in North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, not the National Association of County Commissioners. I don't really think, I mean, I would love to join the NRA, but it's not right for you. Why should you pay your money to have people lobby against us and against the school system? Because of these paper permits, if we wanted to build a school in the Twelve Mile Creek Sewer Basin, until it becomes available, cause people back out of projects, we can't do it, even though we've got two million gallons of sewer capacity on paper sucked up.
The actual flows are seventy-three point two percent.
Seventy-three point two percent.
For Twelve Mile Creek.
So when, when we are told and misinformed that there is no more capacity in Union County, now I understand paper capacity and I do understand and appreciate the ninety-four percent, but the actual capacity is not ninety-four percent. We're at seventy-three percent. And Anson hasn't even, or, um, Marshville hasn't even gone offline yet. So we have capacity and we are working on a plan, but I think it would be irresponsible to throw out a plan when we just finalized receiving information from Brown and Caldwell. And we have, and we haven't even met as a board and staff to chew through that data and prioritize with staff what we need to do with this new information. We just got it. So I have a question. Did the Chamber send the county a resolution when we were at four hundred percent capacity?
I don't remember one.
Did the Chamber of Commerce send us a resolution when we were at ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent capacity?
They sent one last year.
A resolution?
A resolution in September, right before the election, asking the Board of County Commissioners to support infrastructure, which we did. We all do. School infrastructure, road infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, water infrastructure. We all support it.
The last question I have for the county manager, are we still moving forward with getting discharge permits and capacity from the state?
Yes, ma'am.
On, on, for future, um, wastewater needs?
Yes, ma'am.
We are, so the county is still in the application process. Have we received the discharge permits?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Have we received the eight million dollars, um, to pay back even the four million, uh, for the land? Have we received any of that money from the state?
No, ma'am.
So we are negative four million dollars right now, um, on site B, do not have discharge permits, do not have an environmental study, and they haven't even reimbursed our county for purchasing the land.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay.
Unless I'll do you one better than that, we don't have yet to drink a gallon of water out of the Yadkin River in that sub-basin. We can't even put water in the plant if we built the plant yesterday. We've, we've been looking for a source up there for two decades, more, maybe more than that, two, two and a half. And there's no water to drink there yet, but it'll come by the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, right?
End of this year, twenty twenty-three, toward the end of this year.
So finally, we'll even have some water in the county that can be discharged into a plant and into the, into the Rocky River. So, so all this time of, of, I don't remember, you know, I, I just, I'm very concerned that our Chamber, who we pay, who, I just, I don't know if I've ever been part of a group to lobby against me, paying taxpayer money, except for the Chamber. And the Chamber does get a little political, that's what their job is, but they're to represent their members. They're not, they're representing all business in Union County, they're there representing their members. And if their members, who are, some of them are high-density developers, which I don't have a problem with, they came to us, the high-density developers came to us and said, "Please, let us help you. Let us work with you. We, we don't mind paying a little extra for sewer. We don't mind paying a little extra our, uh, system development fees. We'll help you. We'll lobby for that." And they did. And they said, "We don't mind, you know, we know what you're doing. We understand what you're doing and we're working with you." And we were working with them just fine until a guy out of Mecklenburg County starts telling them that they can get something that they can't get because DEQ doesn't want us to give it to them. And I even called DEQ, said, "Can you, can we do this?" "No, don't want you to do that." So, um, it's, it's not a, it's, it's complicated and it's worse than the chicken discussion we had earlier, but it, it's time that, um, it's time that the, the false information stops. You know, we do this, we do it in open, our phone calls are not in open, I wish they were sometimes, but, um, but to be told that we don't have a plan, that we're not doing this, we're not doing that, and somehow we need the towns to take over. They haven't been in twelve and a half years of closed sessions. They haven't been in twelve and a half years of work sessions, open meetings. So motion, any more discussion on the motion?
Uh, I, I don't know that I can really add a whole lot. Other than this, is I'll say this, that the, um, crisis, the word crisis is mentioned here a couple of times in this resolution. Um, I would argue that we don't have a wastewater or water crisis here in Union County, but what I do believe that we do have is a crisis of misinformation. Um, I, I believe that things have been skewed to support certain agendas and I think that that's very unfortunate. Um, I, I'll also add this, that, um, you know, I do have experience in the plumbing industry. Um, I do have twenty-five years' worth of experience. Um, I have, I have certifications regarding project management. There's, there's a laundry list of things I could go into, but I won't. Um, what I will say is, is that, um, to sit here and say that elected commissioners are not qualified to make the decisions from this dais is not only, not only not true, but it's insulting. I would say that our best qualification as a board, and that would include me, is the recognizing that the seat that I sit in is not my seat. This seat is owned by the citizens and the ratepayers and the taxpayers of Union County. It's not mine. And the greatest qualification that I have is recognizing the people that we work for and who we represent.
Mr. Hounds?
Yeah, I, uh, I have to agree with you, Brian. What I do not understand is because the resolution is stating their perception and, and, uh, they're being attacked because they don't agree with what we're saying. I don't agree with what they're saying because I've been let out, of course, I've been out, but even before that, I was left out of the process. And I can tell you that my understanding from being a part of this is that when these contracts or applications to, to buy this wastewater, we can't sell more than a hundred percent. What I have a concern with is that we've got commissioners going around the county saying, "We got plenty of permits. You try to buy one. You got fifty houses you want to build and you could try to go buy them? You can't." Cause that's what happened back when Stony was on the board, this first time, they sold to the point that the state came in and shut us down. So don't tell me about it. I, I, you know, we've had, had commissioners go and represent, represent themselves as speaking for the commission, going around to municipalities and, and the Chamber, saying what, what the, what the boards feels. The wall may feel it, but that doesn't mean the board feels it. So speak for yourself. I can understand in your line of business that you would have expertise in water pipe. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I, I think, I think it, calling the Chamber and going seeing stuff to these towns is pure bullying tactics to shut up so you don't talk about what kind of job you're perceived as being done. to shut up so you don't talk about what kind of job you're perceived as being done. It's inappropriate, it's embarrassing. And I just, I tell you what, I've, I've been on the board 10 and a half years. I've always been proud of it. I'm not right now. And that's, that's a shame.
Mr. David Williams?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do. I will echo what much of Commissioner Richard Helms has said. I think this is, it's now become kind of the modus operandi, the, these bullying tactics where dissent and disagreement is punished. You know, we saw that with our local municipal leaders and this board majority passing a resolution and threatening to have state and federal investigators calling on state, state and federal investigators to investigate our local public officials. We see it with this. You know, this is actually, this, this resolution from the chamber is actually pretty tame. It's certainly a lot more tame than what our municipal leaders have been saying. It does describe our wastewater capacity situation as a crisis, which it is. It is a crisis. But it doesn't, it doesn't demand particular outcomes. It does call for immediate action. But what's, you know, what's, how does it conclude? It basically, this resolution concludes by saying, you know, we call on a study committee to be created so that, you know, our NCD, our legislative folks and our county folks, our county commissioners and our local municipal elected officials can come up with a solution. That seems pretty tame to me. Yet the response of apparently the majority of this board is, we're going to cancel our membership to the Union County Chamber of Commerce. And I guess if we're canceling all of our spin, we'll be canceling our joint events with the chamber, right? So those would be events like, you know, the Leadership Union Program, the Grow Union Business Initiative, joint job fairs, job readiness ventures. Yeah, I guess we won't be in that membership class that includes our municipal friends. Monroe, Indian Trail, Stallings, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, Waxall, Mineral Springs, Fairview, Unionville, Marshville, Wengeet, all members of the Chamber of Commerce. But if this passes, apparently not Union County, a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I don't like to talk this way, but if this passes, this really is the height of nitwittery. And boy, have we seen some nitwittery these past few months. I'll be voting against this motion, you can count on that.
And Mr. Williams, I would remind you that we as a government don't produce a product. We're not a business, we're a government, we're a service to the people. The Board of Education, they produce educated children in this county that the chamber members benefit from. But when we look at the group that the chamber wants to put together, I have a fantastic group that this board has, by majority, not all of us, but by majority, this board wants that group to be massive. 190,000 people in this county that says, yeah, we want a new school. Yeah, we want a new Sheriff's Department, yeah, we want a 911 center. And yeah, we might want a sewer plant. But hey, you know, they may sit in traffic so long that they don't want it. So if they don't want it, so what? They haven't wanted it for a long time with different growth because these towns that we rely on to be our partners, we all haven't been partners. They've been doing their thing, we've been doing our thing. And as long as sewer is available, they can do whatever they want. And we have no say in it, until we come up with an allocation policy, which in your credit, you, you championed that. You championed the allocation policy. And I thought it was such a good idea, I supported you 100% on it. And I still support you 100% on the allocation policy. But until we hold the line on something, we can't implement the allocation policy. So this, you know, this, Richard, that sewer plant was, all that 400% capacity was approved by the county manager and the Public Works Director. Over the years, you and I have worked together to do a pump station policy. We've worked to try to get water to various areas of the county and to do the self-help program, those kind of things. We've had a lot of times that we've worked together. But we still don't have the water yet at the Yadkin Plant. You can't build a sewer plant and not have anything to put in it on the front end. It has to be there. And it's two decades almost that we don't have the source. Water in, poo out, water in, poo out.
Interesting thing is, tonight, we took away the line that's going to bring it to one of our partners in applying for the Yadkin permit. You know, and to tell me back in 2006, the commission did not have any effect on water and sewer, our utilities, you weren't doing your job then.
Oh, oh, no. One of us did their job. Who do you think took the information to DEQ? I did, because that was doing my job. And that's when the, that's when the moratorium came on and your good friends in, in the chamber didn't have a word to say about it. They didn't care.
Well.
They didn't care, no resolution.
I'm proud to call my friends in the chamber friends because they have the best interests of Union County and they work at it. You, right after the primary last year, you told me that, Richard, you're going to be, you're going to be neutered, you're not going to be able to accomplish anything.
Richard, that's a damn lie, that's a damn lie. That is a damn lie. You might have heard it from Dennis. I don't use the word neuter, I'd said castrate, that's the word I use.
Okay, excuse me, I was trying to be a little.
But I, I don't, I've been nice to you and I've been, but that's a damn lie. And if you and the chamber like lying about stuff like we don't have a plan, that's maybe why we're getting out of it, so. Anybody else got a comment on this? Everybody's made a comment.
Immediate attention, I, I want to address immediate attention. Mr. Matthews, if we received discharge permits and environmental study that I've heard could take three to five years, and we know there's a hill splitter issue in this, in this Porter Ridge area, if we got all of that approved tomorrow, how long would it take to build a sewer plant at Site B approximately?
So if you, if you actually had your discharge permit and your environmental studies, it would take approximately four years to construct? Because we don't have our environmental studies or our permit. We estimate it's eight to 10 years from, from today to be able to build a plant.
So even if the state sent us the money to pay for the land and all the studies that have to be done, the design work that has to be done, can we design a plant without knowing what size the discharge permits are going to be?
No, ma'am.
So we don't even have a timetable to get a plant designed because we don't know what size plant they're going to approve us for?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, so eight to 10 years, we don't have the money, we're already in the hole for a board that moved forward with purchasing land without any of this stuff back from the state. We didn't even have $4 million from the state. This board has given approval to get, go through the application process, find out what size we need. Then we can do a, a design, you know, we can do design fees, do the environmental study. None of this has happened. So immediate is not even possible to match, unless immediate is the same as eight to 10 years. But we are immediately reviewing the data that we just finalized with Brown and Caldwell so that we can maybe have a work session in the near future to hear from you and staff what you're going to recommend to us, which hasn't happened yet, based on the data we just received. I would presume that you and staff are going to, are in the future going to tell us what you think we need to do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's part of the budget, correct?
Actually, when it comes to your, your capital plan and your rates, that can be done at any point in time.
And I want to go on record that the chamber invited the chairman and myself to come have a meeting with them. We did not just willy-nilly show up and attend a meeting. We were invited to be there to answer questions. Brian Matthews was there as well. And as far as Marvin, we were extended invitations to be there as well. And you and Commissioner Brian Helms accepted the invitation.
Wuma?
Wuma.
Went to Wuma?
So it wasn't just commissioners showing up at meetings and, and answering the questions that they said they had when they extended the invitation.
I'll just say this, that, just for a point of clarification, Mr. Matthews, if you're there, you said that we spent approximately $13,000 with the chamber currently?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the intersection lighting was approximately $17,000?
Yes, sir.
Well.
I'll, I'll add that to my motion, if you want to move it to that.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
All right, any other discussion? Motion is to drop our chamber membership and to use the money saved from that to do the intersection lighting and roundabout lighting. Put it toward the intersection and roundabout lighting. Any discussion? All of those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
Next, we have 23-338. This is one of the items you want to pull off, Brian?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so I asked for this to be pulled for discussion simply because I want to make sure that I understand what it is that, that we're bringing forward here. So 23-338 is the item, the Budget Amendment for Medicaid Enhanced, Claiming Hold Harmless and Medicaid Expansion, Continuous Coverage, Unwinding Support Funding. So according to the information that we received, this item would recognize, receive and appropriate $123,000 plus via budget amendment and then recognize, receive and appropriate $703,000 via budget amendment. And I, I just want to make sure that I understand where this money is coming from. So as I read this, we're, we're sort of transitioning from a 75-25 type funding split to more of a 50-50, is that correct? Okay. And the, this is being called from what? Is it HB 76 then, is that the Medicaid expansion?
It's two separate ones. It's just two funding allocations for DSS, so we put it together. So we can talk about the Enhanced Claiming Hold Harmless, which is a $703,000 first, if you want. And that's the one where for in Medicaid, at DSS, for our expenditures, we were receiving 75% reimbursement for whatever expenditures we have for that program. Couple of years ago, the feds came into the state of North Carolina and did an audit and realized that the way that the state of North Carolina, via social services for each county, were doing business was incorrect when it came to indirect costs. So they said, you need to start charging those at a 50% reimbursement rate. So the state came down, showed us how we needed to redo it. Instead of putting that burden on the county, last year, the state covered that cost. And we as DSS and county governments asked that in this coming year, if they could also help us with that cost, because it's quite a significant cost, $703,000. They found the $703,000 for Union County, for each of the counties, whatever their allocation is. And that is straight state funding that they're giving us to help ease that burden.
But this is a one-time that they're going to help ease our burden?
Technically, the second time, they did it last year. They're going to do it again this year, but we need to figure that out for the coming years. It just gives us some time to work on our budget. We've been working with Beverly and her team on our cost allocation plan, trying to look at how we have certain things set up within our budget and so that we can ease some of that burden for the next year.
Yeah, because that, that was one of my concerns is, you know, we're looking at a one-time, you know, grant, or, or, well, one-time funding of $703,000, but yet we're adding in 10,000 new customers.
Yeah.
So at, you know, future years, then, well, we're going to have to come up with a solution.
Yeah, and it's not all of it. So we're still able to claim 75% reimbursement on some of our expenditures. So like, when you think about our staff that we have doing actual Medicaid eligibility work, there's, we're still able to claim that expenditure at 75%. This is more indirect stuff like cost of the building, tech, like that kind of stuff, computer equipment. So you want me to speak to the Medicaid expansion section, the $123,000?
Yeah, actually, I do, if you, if you'd be so kind.
Yeah, I'd love to. So I know that y'all have seen in the news that HB 76 was passed and that brings Medicaid expansion to the state of North Carolina. Looking at the impact that's going to have on Union County, we're looking at between, according to the matrix the state gave us, 10 to 11,000 additional Medicaid recipients. I personally think that's a good thing, that's working-class residents here in Union County who will have access to healthcare. Also opens it up a little bit for single working individuals between the ages of 18 to 64, before they can get on Medicare. What, what we know is that the state budget year starts in October. And that's all I can tell you that I know right now. We don't know when actual Medicaid expansion is going to start. I don't know when we're going to have to start deciding that people are eligible or ineligible. But I can't just September 30th get an email that says, hey, we're going to start doing that October 1st, when I need to hire about 12 staff people in order to handle 10 to 11,000 new Medicaid recipients. So the state also heard us when we said that was unreasonable. And so they have come up with a cost allocation for each county to receive $5,000 flat plus however much portion of your current Medicaid recipients. Union County currently has approximately 60,000 total Medicaid recipients. So that's how they come up with the other 118,000 that's part of this, this funding that we're getting. We're going to get 123,000 and that's supposed to cover the months of May through September. That gives me and my team time to recruit, hire, train, one eligibility supervisor, 10 eligibility specialists, and one eligibility technician. Those folks are going to be added to our team to handle that additional 10 to 11,000 Medicaid recipients. All of those new staff, though, will also be reimbursed at 75%. So it won't just be that 123,000 that we're getting for those five months. Once I can get them hired and get them working on training, I can also pull down that reimbursement, okay? But like I said, this funds us through the end of September. Come October, the state has promised us, and it's in HB 76, that they're going to cover the cost of Medicaid expansion. I can't tell you how that's going to look because they haven't told us yet. They just said they're going to do it. We'll see. But this, this is actually a boon because usually we get unfunded mandates. And this is actually a mandate that we're getting a little funding with. And so I'm, I'm actually kind of happy about that. I'll be, it's been very difficult. We're dealing with the same staffing shortage that everybody else in the nation is dealing with. It's going to take, so I, I am, when I have a good waitress or waiter, I'm handing out my business card and letting them know that they could get an eight-to-five job with the county doing Medicaid eligibility, because I need good staff. So this gives me at least five months where I can start working on trying to find good people to bring into DSS so that we can make sure that this 10 to 11,000 people who qualify, who are going to qualify for Medicaid that need it, and they'll be able to get it.
I'm not going to say it again, you're on camera.
Oh, hi, Mom, no, I'm just kidding.
No, you need, you need, you need workers.
I do need workers. If anybody's looking, go to unioncountync.gov, up in the top corner, it says careers, click that button. Look for eligibility specialist Medicaid in parentheses.
There you go.
First off, thank you, thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
These twelve new positions will be ongoing salaries? And will they be one hundred percent funded by the state, or only seventy percent, seventy-five percent funded? Which means the other twenty-five percent will have to come from local dollars?
I, I cannot officially answer that question. What I can tell you is that in HB seventy-six, it says that we will not be tasked with the burden of Medicaid expansion. If we are reimbursed at seventy-five percent, the burden to me is that other twenty-five percent, so we'll see how the cards fall.
So we're not sure?
We're not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am. P.S., I liked your turkey joke.
Anybody got a question? Brian, would you like to make a motion?
So this mu, this money tonight that is before us now is just to get you through September?
The hundred and twenty thousand, the hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar pot, yes ma'am.
Okay.
The seven hundred thousand dollar pot, that's for all of next fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I understand, I understand the situation that you're in. I, I guess the heartburn that I have is, is that, you know, to your point, you know, you, you made the comment that you said, most of the time, we get those unfunded mandates. That's part of my concern, is I, I want to make sure that we're being completely funded. If this is a state initiative to, to expand Medicaid, I want to make sure that we're not in the hole here.
It's in the bill.
Yeah. So, you know, with that, I, I mean, I think we have no choice but to, you know, accept this money. And I, I say that very reluctantly, because I'm not crazy about it. But I will make the motion that, that we recognize, receive, and appropriate the one hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars via budget, budget amendment twenty-eight, and two, recognize, receive, and appropriate the seven hundred and three thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars via budget amendment twenty-nine and three, and authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item. And then I would also like to revisit this next year, or at the end of this term, to possibly get an update, to see, you know, where we stand with those, with that state funding.
That sounds good, I'd love to.
Thank you.
Thanks y'all.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, next, twenty-three, three forty-one, Special Revenue Ordinance Amendment, Public Infrastructure Local Workforce Development Agreement. And Brian, you had, I think you had this one off too?
Yes sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dennis, thanks for staying late. I realize that this is going above and beyond the call. So, yeah, I wanted to also pull this item and discuss this as well, again, making sure that we're clear on the understanding, because we're dealing with a five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar, nine hun, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollar grant. And I guess my first question is, is that, reading through the information here, this is a grant that's being, well, it's being furnished from the CDC through, if I understand this correctly, and feel free to correct me, Dennis, but this is being filtered through North Carolina Division of Public Health, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It's passed through funding, it's originally from the CDC, passed through the state.
Okay. And so in reading the information here, this five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars is not without strings, so to speak. So the requirement for this grant is that we must invest in one or more CDC-stated program areas. And our information had, let's see, four of them listed, that was recruit and hire new staff, retain public health staff, let's see, support and sustain public health staff, strengthen public health, workforce planning, systems, processes, and policies. I guess my question is, is, obviously, you've seen this information, you're aware of the requirement from, from the CDC. Where do we see Union County putting forth the effort, and what CDC-stated program areas are we going to be looking at investing this money in?
Well, it's a good, this is a good question, and actually, the, the main areas where we have needs, we've, we've met with some of our internal staff in terms of looking at, I mean, the purpose behind these funds is to, you know, try to help shore up or build some infrastructure that local public health departments can, can utilize to help carry out their work and things that, that need to be done. And so there were a few areas where, you know, we see that there can be some gaps where we can use these resources to help augment or to help support, and some of those areas are listed in, in my information on the, on the agenda. One is to provide some support and assistance for facilitating and coordinating a healthy union advisory coalition. That is a, a group that's been in existence for a number of years. It's also very important in our community health assessment process. It also looks at, looking at high priority issues, health concerns in the community. It's got a lot of representatives from other health and human service agencies in the county to address priority concerns and issues in the community. And so we were thinking about utilizing some of the resources, and this, and this would primarily be temporary, part-time, and/or contract-related support that, that we think would, would be needed in these kind of, in this kind of capacity, to essentially, in this case, help support the efforts of that, of that coalition and the work that goes on. The community health assessment and that whole process is part of our accreditation requirements as well, from a public health standpoint. So that's one area that, where we wanted to utilize some of these resources. And another area, it falls into the environmental health arena, and I know Tracy Colley is here to, she could actually maybe elaborate a little bit on some of these other areas, but it would primarily be through a contract, consulting, temporary, these are not, we're not looking at these to be long-term kind of commitments in terms of where these resources are, is to try to build our capacity in some areas where we have some weaknesses right now. And for example, a couple of those, integrating the FDA program standard, supporting the well rehabilitation program, and also assisting with land use reviews. And I don't know if Tracy wants to share any, anymore about that, so you have a little idea of what.
Sure, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any other question?
Yeah, could, could you go into more detail on number two, support? I would like to hear more about the support that you need and would be used by these funds for the well rehabilitation program, and what land use reviews mean to you?
Right, so last October, the board approved funding through the ARPA program to fund a well rehab and repair program. ARPA funding would be used, we would do well assessments, downhole camera, well water sampling, you know, and identify specific needs at properties to rehabilitate, install treatment, or in some cases, replace a well. That would be no, at no cost to the property owner. It's another way to address this arsenic issue and some of the other contaminants we have. So this funding would be used to support kind of the, the startup of that program, where there's a lot of need for data entry, things like that, so that's, this would be a temporary position to get us going. I mean, the ideal is that this program would be very beneficial, and the county would see it as a benefit to the citizens, and would move forward and fund it. So we want to really roll it out well, roll it out professionally, and make sure it, you know, starts off properly. So that's, that's that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, so what you're saying is, we can directly attribute those dollars to the well, the well rehabilitation, rehabilitation program?
Right, somehow.
It's been a long night.
Well, it's the peep, let's clarify that, it's the people you would need to hire, whether it's part-time or temporary, to do the testing, but it would not, the dollars would not be used to replace the wells?
No, no, not at all, no. And it wouldn't be people to do the testing, it would be support staff, because I need my field staff to still do their other work. So this would support their work, data entry, you know, creating spreadsheets, taking phone calls, and those types of things.
The administration side of, of taking this program.
Gotcha.
So, so essentially, staffing?
Yes sir.
Okay. So, so that, that brings the, the question then, you know, when, when you receive grants like this, and this was mentioned during an earlier item, you know, when you see, when you receive a grant like this, and you attribute that to staffing, what happens at the end of the five-year period, you know, when the grant is expired? You know, do you, do you still retain these positions? And if so, how are, how are we going to accommodate for the, the cost of these new positions being added to the local health department?
Sure, so the, understand that, and I think Dennis and both Tracy said this, that, you know, we would look at temporary staffing, we would look at contract work, this is not adding FTEs to our, our budget. And then obviously, we'd bring that back with results, and show that this is how successful or unsuccessful the program was, and what do you wish to do with the continuation of that? And then the board says, listen, we like it, and we're going to want to fund it, then obviously, we'd have to put that in our budget. If not, then that contract would go away, those temporary employees would go away.
How many years is this grant?
It actually goes through October of twenty-seven, so it's really, you're looking at about four and a half years of funding. It's, you know, from that perspective, it's a little unique, because we typically just get sort of year-to-year funding. This is essentially a five-year initiative. It also has some flexibility. I mean, it can only be used for certain things, as you listed, Commissioner Helms, but we also have the flexibility, we can use, you know, a third or half of it in the first year, and then the, so it, we have the full amount available. I just projected around a hundred and thirty-one thousand is what it would average out over the course of a year in term, I mean, in terms of looking at it on an annual basis. But there, there is a little bit of flexibility in that, but, you know, I do think it's a, it's a good opportunity, as Tracy and county manager mentioned, it's, you know, there's some areas where we have some little gaps here and there, and this is a way to help shore that up, to some extent, to then see, okay, are we, have we got this off on the right foot? Is it, is it doing well? And if it's not, you know, we're not going to, we don't want to continue something. I know the, the adage, it's always really easy to start something, it's very difficult to stop something, and that's true, and I understand that. But I think in, in something like this, we're trying to be smart about it, so that we, we actually are learning from it, and folks would know in this process. That's like if we're contracting, or if we're having a temporary part-time, people understand that there's a condition here that's aligned with these positions in that process.
Yeah, and Dennis, you know, you know me well enough to know that I'm not the biggest fan of the CDC, and I certainly don't like to be beholden to them. And so, you know, with that, I did look at the reporting requirements, and it appears as though you report through the North Carolina Division of Public Health, and then they report that up versus the CDC, is that correct?
Yeah, and it's actually a fairly, it's one of the more simple reporting processes. I mean, they've tried to not have too many strings tied to this, you know, and we could pivot, and, you know, we've got five hundred and something thousand dollars. If, if we got two years into this, and we realize there's another more immediate need, we could also utilize these resources, or what's left of those resources, to help assist in that, in that regard. And I'm not saying it's all willy-nilly, but it's a little unusual to have that kind of, that kind of flexibility. But, yeah, the reporting is to the state.
I would like to just say, you know, thank you very much for explaining all of this tonight, and being here so late. I would be inclined to support this, because I think a report came out just in the last several days, that not only does Union County have an arsenic problem, but I saw a report, I think yesterday, that there are a lot of heavy metals and stuff, you know, if, if they're not on the, on the, the Union County water or whatever. So I think when I read that report, I became even more concerned. At first, I thought they were talking about Union County Public Works, but I quickly learned that it was not. So, and I, we saw a map earlier of, you know, how many people are depending on making sure that they have safe drinking water. So I will offer an, a motion to approve staff moving forward to accept the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for staffing purposes, to work on the, the three, the three areas they identified, including the environmental health and the, and support of our well rehabilitation and patient referral.
Any discussion on the motion?
I think we've kind of beat this one up. Dennis, thank you, and Tracy, and Ashley as well.
I liked your turkey joke, too.
I'll try to find more.
Dennis, my, my only question is, well, one last one, and, and that is, you know, if, could we get a copy of these reports by request, if we, if we wanted? Is that something we can do?
Yeah, certainly, certainly.
And, and we'd love to hear success stories, like when you're able to help, help our citizens through this program, we'd love for you to come back and share your success stories on how this is going.
It's a great opportunity.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, last item, before Commissioners' comments and Managers' comments. Jason Kay has been serving as our interim attorney, county attorney, for a while now, and it's time, come time to figure out what we're going to do. So I would make the motion that move to appoint Jason Kay to serve as county attorney in accordance with NCGS one-five-three-A-dash-one-one-four. And any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Well, congratulations, Jason, keep it straight.
Thank you to each one of the Commissioners, as well as to the manager and the assistant managers for your support as well, I appreciate it, I take it seriously, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also a big fan of the turkey jokes.
Okay, next, we have County Managers' comments.
I've been long-winded tonight, so I want to say no comment.
Okay. Commissioner Richard Helms?
Yeah. Only thing I want to say is, I've, I've been out, and in hospital most of the time since I've been out. I've had a lot of people that have been praying for me, and I'll tell you what, the surgeons said that that's the only reason I got through it. So I want to thank those that have supported me, and with their prayers and everything to get through this. So I appreciate it, and we'll talk to you later. Y'all have a good evening.
Commissioner David Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, Commissioner Richard Helms, welcome back. I am so glad to have you back, and not only that, but most especially, to see you growing in strength and health, and
Thank you.
I just couldn't be more thrilled about all that. So welcome, welcome back.
Commissioner Brian Helms?
Yeah, so first of all, it is good to see Commissioner Helms back.
Thank you.
So glad that he can be here, and glad that he's doing better. I'd like to thank our county manager for putting together his, and the in-staff as well, for putting together a great proposed budget. I think that this captures a lot of what we had asked for, including the bifurcated budget, flat tax rate, and some other things. So I think that he got, well, staff definitely got creative, but I think this is something that we can definitely work with, and I commend staff and our county manager. I'd also like to congratulate Jason Kay on his appointment. I believe that Jason has done a fantastic job for us, and I'm excited to continue to work with Jason as well. Thank you for, for Dennis, and Ashley, and Tracy, and all your staff, I appreciate you staying late to answer our questions, I really do. So with that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Vice Chair Melissa Merritt?
I do want to say that it was really nice, Commissioner Helms, Richard Helms, to see you back tonight, looking so healthy and joining us back here at this board. It is nice to see you back up here, and we wish you continued progress in your recovery. in your recovery. Um, look forward to working with you going forward. I wanna, um, also congratulate Jason Kay, um, on representing, um, all of Union County government and, uh, general counsel to the board. Um, it has been a pleasure to work with you over the last several months, and, um, just really appreciate what you do for us. And, um, Brian Matthews and staff, um, I think there were some allegations made tonight that, um, that you were given very difficult, skies-falling, um, objectives to, um, bring us a budget tonight. And I think, um, with the time that I have spent, um, with each of you, um, I have not experienced that at all, um, just complete com, um, competence in what you do, and I, I thank you for the budget you presented tonight, and for the, um, for the partnership that you have shown with Union County Public Schools, and funding that will help take care of all of our charter schools. Thank you very much.
And, um, Richard, I, whether we agree or disagree on anything, I wanna tell you, we're all pulling for you. And, and we prayed for you. The staff's been praying for you, and, and, and just so proud of you for what you've overcome. And, and I know it hasn't been an easy fight. I know that it's been a hard fight, and you've, you've battled back, and, 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 you know, it's, uh, you know, going through sickness last year, it, I'm nowhere near what you went through. But, just really am pleased to have you back in this. I, I know this whole board feels the same way, and they've, they've expressed that. And again, the staff. Jason, congratulations. Uh, staff, congratulations for the budget. Um, and, um, with that, we're gonna make a motion to go into closed session. All of y'all don't have to come with us. That's the good news.
Good night.
Um, the, uh, I move that the board go into closed session, uh, for the following, pursuant to GS 143-318, to prevent, uh, one, A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential, pursuant to GS 153A-98, and pursuant to GS 143-31811A3, to consult with the attorney, with an attorney to, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and pursuant to GS 143-831811A4, to discuss matters relating to the location, expansion of industries or other businesses, including, uh, agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives, and pursuant to GS 143-31811A6, to consult with the, uh, and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, and character, and fitness of, and conditions of an appointment, or conditions of initial employment, and of, um, individual public officer, employer, employee, or prospective public officer or employee. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.